Okay, we are live.
Okay, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the February 2nd, 2021 Public Hearing, Public Meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Yep.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Here.
Okay, we're all set.
Great, thank you, Rich, and welcome to the February 2nd Public Hearing and Public Meeting. This meeting is being held via Zoom and livestreamed on YouTube. And if you'd like to watch the proceedings, please visit our YouTube channel to watch the livestream. If you would like to testify on any hearing items later in the day, please join the meeting at the estimated time for the items shown on our hearing agenda. And the hearing agenda can be found on our website. We will begin our agenda today with a public meeting for research items, proposals for designation and calendaring for future public hearings. And then we will move to a meeting for our preservation items that consist mostly of items that have been read into the record on other hearing days but weren't actually heard. So we will open a hearing for those items. And then finally, we will have our public hearing for new applications. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Research, Kate Leemus-McHale, to begin our research agenda.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. Item number one this morning on the research agenda is LP 2645, the Harriet and Thomas Trusdale House at 227 Duffield Street, Brooklyn, Block 146, Lot 15. The item proposed for designation is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse constructed circa 1848 to 51 and extended in 1933 that was home to abolitionists Harriet and Thomas Trusdale from 1851 to 63. For more than a decade prior to the Civil War, 227 Duffield Street was the home of Thomas and Harriet Trusdale, notable abolitionists who moved to Brooklyn in 1839. They owned and lived in this house on Duffield Street from 1851 to 1863, and the property remained in their family for 70 years. While a two-story commercial extension was added in 1933, the house retains its 19th-century form and historic fabric visible above the addition. The modest rowhouse is significant for its association with the Trusdales and the history of the abolition movement in Brooklyn prior to the Civil War. At the public hearing on July 14th, 2020, 44 people testified in favor of the proposed designation, including New York State Attorney General Letitia James, City Council Member Stephen Levin, and Inez Baron, State Assembly Members Charles Baron, and a representative of Joanne Simon, New York City's first deputy public advocate Nick Smith, the Brooklyn Community Board III, and advocates and organizations including the New York Landmarks Conservancy, Historic Districts Council, the Society for the Architecture of the City, Black Lives Matter Brooklyn, Families United for Racial and Economic Equality, and Equity for Flatbush, as well as several individuals. A representative of the owner of 227 Duffield Street testified in opposition to the designation. In addition, the commission received 85 letters of support for designation. The proposed landmark site is tax map Block 146, Lot 15, between Fulton Street and Willoughby Street in downtown Brooklyn. Research staff carefully studied 227 Duffield Street and the Trusdales within the context of 19th-century abolitionism. This timeline developed for our interactive story map, New York City and the Path to Freedom, shows some of the milestones leading up to the abolition of slavery nationwide in 1865. The Trusdales were active in the abolitionist movement in New England and in Brooklyn, beginning in the 1830s and including while living at 227 Duffield Street from 1851 to 1863. In the early 19th century, Brooklyn's economy relied heavily on the storage and export of agricultural products shipped from southern slaveholding states. Yet, its waterfront and large population of free African-Americans made it a hub for abolitionist activity before the Civil War. Brooklyn's busy waterfront was the entry point for many freedom seekers who stowed away on ships to escape slavery in the South. Many were sheltered by Brooklyn abolitionists and either stayed in Brooklyn or traveled north to upstate New York or New England, and many went to Canada. Abolitionist activity took many forms, including membership in anti-slavery organizations, political activism, fundraising, lecturing, writing, and publishing. It involved people from many walks of life and across social, religious, and racial spectrums. Brooklyn was home to many who opposed slavery, and several prominent individuals associated with the abolition movement lived or worked in buildings within the Brooklyn Heights Historic District, where the Trusdales lived before moving to Duffield Street. Henry Ward Beecher was a minister at Plymouth Church who drew large crowds with his fiery sermons. James W.C. Pennington came to Brooklyn escaping slavery and became an influential minister and writer. And Louis Tappan was a businessman who worked tirelessly to abolish slavery and founded the abolitionist journal Human Rights. Several individual landmarks and historic districts in Brooklyn reflect its abolitionist history. The designated houses on Hunterfly Road in Weeksville, for example, embody the history of an early African-American community that was a safe haven for free and enslaved African-Americans. The Brooklyn Heights Historic District, as I mentioned, includes homes and churches associated with the anti-slavery movement, the most notable being Plymouth Church, shown here in the center, which was referred to as the Grand Central Depot of the Underground Railroad. Closer to Duffield Street is the first free congregational church on Bridge Street, an individual landmark that was also an important stop on the Underground Railroad. Documenting Underground Railroad activity is difficult, given its secret and clandestine nature. Recent verbal accounts of 227 Duffield Street being a stop on the Underground Railroad have not been confirmed after extensive research and physical analysis. Nevertheless, the building is historically significant as a rare example of a property associated with Brooklyn's important legacy of abolitionist activity, and specifically with the Trusdales, whose active support of the anti-slavery movement was documented during their time at 227 Duffield Street, a time when abolitionist activities often resulted in harsh penalties for those who broke the 1850 fugitive slave law. Some background on the Trusdales. Before moving to New York City from Providence, Rhode Island, both Thomas and Harriet Trusdale were active in the abolition movement in the 1830s. They were among the founders in a number of anti-slavery organizations, including the Rhode Island Anti-Slavery Society, the New England Anti-Slavery Society, and the Providence Ladies Anti-Slavery Society. As dedicated supporters of the New England Anti-Slavery Movement, the Trusdales were friends of William Lloyd Garrison, one of the country's leading abolitionists, who also championed women's rights. Unlike a number of other abolitionists, Garrison insisted that women participate on equal terms as men. In 1838, Thomas and Harriet left Providence and moved his export and import firm to Pearl Street in Manhattan, close to the waterfront. While maintaining his business in the city, they lived in Brooklyn, first at 14 Hick Street in Brooklyn Heights. William Lloyd Garrison's papers include letters documenting a number of visits to the Trusdales in New York, including a trip in 1840 to their rowhouse here. That house is at 14 Hick Street, shown by the arrow above the 1884 Sanborn map. This was later demolished for construction of the Brooklyn Queens Expressway. Thomas and Harriet Trusdale moved to 227 Duffield Street in 1851, shortly after the three-story brick rowhouse was built. The neighborhood at that time consisted of rows of both wood and brick residences, most with front and rear porches and basements, as seen in the 1855 Paris map on the left. 227 Duffield Street still had its front porch in place in 1907, as shown in the photograph, where the house is indicated by a red arrow. By the turn of the 20th century, the neighborhood gradually began to change from residential into Brooklyn's downtown retail and commercial center, as shown on the Sanborn map on the right. The Trusdales continued to support the abolition movement during the time they lived at 227 Duffield Street. Records show Thomas Trusdale was associated with the American Anti-Slavery Society from 1853 to 63, and supported the National Anti-Slavery Standard from 1855 to 62. The New York Daily Times noted that Thomas and his family were among the notable men in the audience at a large anti-slavery event held August 1st, 1855. The celebration marked the anniversary of emancipation in the West Indies and included a speech by their friend William Lloyd Garrison. Harriet died in 1862 while living at 227 Duffield Street, and Thomas moved to New Jersey the next year. Descendants of the Trusdale family retained the house until 1921, resulting in the family's 70-year association with the property. Since its time associated with the Trusdales, the house's front and rear porches were removed, and in 1933, a two-story commercial addition was constructed, extending from the front of the building. A certificate of occupancy from 1933 at the Department of Buildings lists a store and luncheonette within the first two floors, with apartments above. The original 1850s facade above the commercial extension remains visible, with its fenestration pattern window surrounds red brick cladding and cornice. The Harriet and Thomas Trusdale House is significant as a rare example of a property associated with notable abolitionists, who resided there for more than a decade and whose anti-slavery activities have been well documented. While its neighborhood has changed dramatically and its lower stories have been altered, the building conveys its 19th-century residential character and its significant association with Brooklyn's prominent role in the anti-slavery movement before the Civil War. The research staff, and I want to just note that Mary Ann Hurley and Margaret Herman both did a lot of work on this, and Mary Ann's research was really excellent to uncover a lot of this information. The research staff recommends the commission designate the Harriet and Thomas Trusdale House as an individual New York City landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioners, before we begin our discussion, does anyone have any questions for Kate and the research team? Or any questions for anyone about the property? Okay, so I think I'm gonna make...start to unmute everybody so we can start to have our discussion and hopefully move to a motion. Okay, so I think, you know, this is an exciting day. As Kate described, this property is significant for its long association with Harriet and Thomas Trusdale, who were noted abolitionists in downtown Brooklyn and Brooklyn Heights, and who also continued their work while living at this house. And it retains much of its fabric, and that fabric still conveys the period of their association and the period in which downtown Brooklyn was very active with abolitionist activity. So I think on those grounds, I would recommend we move to designation. Would anyone else like to add anything? Okay. All right, so, okay, well, if I think there's no other comments, then Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to read the motion?
Sure.
If you've got it, great.
Sarah?
Yes, yes.
There's that, Rich, you just read into the record whatever we've seen.
Yes, which I think, you know, is, I think, captured in the presentation, but since we calendared the item for the vote today on Friday, we did receive additional letters, and Rich will summarize that.
Yes, we have received five additional letters in support and one in opposition.
Okay. All right, okay, with that, Jeannie, will you do it?
Sure.
Do the motion?
Motion to designate Harriet and Thomas Trusdale House Borough of Brooklyn. I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Harriet and Thomas Trusdale House to 227 Duffield Street Borough of Brooklyn as a New York City landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development, heritage, and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation set forth in the designation report for LP-2645 dated February 2nd, 2021. I also move that the Brooklyn tax map Block 146, Lot 15 be designated as its landmark site, as illustrated in the attached map.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. All right, Rich, will you call the vote?
Yes. Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith.
Aye.
Okay, with 11 in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. That's our newest landmark. We'll move to the next item.
Item number two is LP 2651, the proposed Dorance Brook Square Historic District, Manhattan. The item proposed for the commission's calendar consists of intact streetscapes of 19th and early 20th-century architecture located within two sections on either side of Frederick Douglass Boulevard, between West 136th Street and West 140th Street, which have significant associations with notable African-Americans during the Harlem Renaissance. The proposed Dorance Brook Square Historic District features intact streetscapes that exhibit striking late 19th and early 20th-century architecture designed by prominent New York City architects. This residential enclave is significant for its association with notable African-American figures during the Harlem Renaissance, from the early 1920s through the 1940s. The proposed historic district features two sections generally bounded by St. Nicholas Avenue to the west, West 140th Street to the north, West 136th Street to the south, and Adam Clayton Powell Jr. Boulevard to the east. The eastern section abuts the southern boundary of the St. Nicholas Historic District, shown in blue here, which was designated in 1967. The proposed historic district is an exciting intersection between agency priorities under Chair Sarah Carroll's leadership and Community Board 10's preservation plan for Harlem. We've worked closely with Community Board 10, and in recent years have prioritized our own study areas in the community board area, resulting in the designation of Mount Morris Park Historic District Extension and the Central Harlem West 130th to 132nd Street Historic District. These, along with the proposed historic district, are outlined in red on this map and correspond with four Community Board 10 priority study areas, which have also been priorities for a safe Harlem now. We received a request and have been working with the Dorance Brooks Property Owners and Residents Association to evaluate the western section of the proposed district, and dedicated a team of research staff to study the broader area. From this careful research and analysis, we identified two meritorious areas. They are separated by recent construction along Frederick Douglass Boulevard, but linked historically, architecturally, and by their combined cultural significance. This photo shows the proposed historic district in 1908 and the public space that became Dorance Brook Square. Speculative rowhouse development in the proposed district was prompted by the arrival of elevated rail service along Frederick Douglass Boulevard, then 8th Avenue, in 1868, and later in anticipation of the IND 8th Avenue Line, which opened in 1932 and is now the B and C Lines. African-Americans who had been pushed by discrimination and demolition out of neighborhoods on the west side of Manhattan began moving to Harlem in the early 20th century. And by the 1920s, middle-class African-Americans, including notable intellectuals, artists, actors, educators, and doctors, began to call this part of Harlem home. Under the speculative development model, a developer would purchase multiple adjacent lots, erect the maximum number of rowhouses to fit on the subdivided lots, and use available architectural elements to minimize costs. Because of this, as is evident in these images, the proposed historic district is characterized by remarkably cohesive streetscapes. Rowhouse development within the proposed district began in 1887 and continued in clusters until around 1905. Here's the area in 1893, and in 1897 with more rows built, and in 1916, once all of its rowhouses were built. Between 1913 and 1930, five apartment buildings were built to replace earlier rowhouses and to infill the vacant triangles shown on this map. Anchored by Dorance Brook Square, the proposed district was home to prominent African-American individuals and organizations in the early 20th century. Dorance Brook Square was named for Dorance Brooks, a black serviceman who died in action while serving with the segregated military in the First World War. The square was dedicated in 1925 and was the first public space in New York City to honor an African-American in this way. These images show the square in 1926, and this would be New York City's first historic district named after an African-American. Dorance Brooks was widely regarded as a hero and renowned for his bravery and service to our country. His actions helped to dismantle racist notions about black Americans' fitness for military service. Harry S. Truman later stated that it is to be credit to the people of this great city of New York, that his heroism has been appreciated and acknowledged here. St. Mark's Church, shown on the left, was a prominent African-American congregation founded in Hell's Kitchen in 1871. Following the movement of New York's African-American population uptown to Harlem, the congregation built this Gothic Revival church in 1926, shortly after Dorance Brook Square was dedicated. Dorance Brook Square became the location of notable political protests from the 1920s on, and visits from Harry S. Truman in 1948 and '52, when he was given an award for civil rights achievements, including desegregating the U.S. Armed Forces. African-American intellectuals, artists, actors, educators, and the burgeoning black middle class called this Harlem neighborhood home during the Harlem Renaissance era, approximately from 1915 to 1940. And these are images of people and places within the district. The next few slides will go through that in a bit more detail. The arts were a way to broadcast the intelligence and talent of African-American creatives. Artists worked in different media to interpret the African-American experience. Among the prominent residents associated with the arts and the literature in the proposed historic district were intellectual and SASW EB DuBois, stage and motion picture actress Ethel Waters, and celebrated sculptor Augusta Savage. Artist studios here included the Harlem Artist Guild and the Uptown Art Laboratory at 321 West 136th Street. The neighborhood was also the center of a vibrant social scene. In their home at 580 St. Nicholas Avenue, Regina Anderson, Luella Tucker, and Ethel Ray Nance fostered the careers of notable Harlem Renaissance artists County Cullen, Langston Hughes, and many others by hosting the Harlem West Side Literary Salon, or for those in the know, 580. These women also opened their home for community gatherings and cultural activities. In addition to Dorance Brook Square, several buildings in the proposed district were the sites of important activist work. These include the National Urban League, founded to improve urban conditions for African-Americans in New York, and was at its location on 136th Street from 1910 to the present. The White Rose Mission, also on 136th Street, a settlement house for African-American women and girls, was here from 1918 to 1984. W.E.B. DuBois lived in the district, as did Walter F. White, who served as president of the NAACP from 1929 to '55. And the Brotherhood of Sleeping Car Porters, the first African-American trade union, was headquartered here, under the direction of Asa Philip Randolph in 1927. Discriminatory barriers denied African-American doctors the same rights, privileges, and access as their white counterparts, and created the need for African-American doctors to seek alternate avenues to care for the growing population in Harlem. Two important hospitals started by African-American doctors to serve the Harlem community are located within the proposed district: the Vincent Sanatorium and Hospital on Adam Clayton Powell Boulevard, and the Edgcombe Sanatorium at 46 Edgcombe Avenue. Dr. May Edward Chin, who's shown here, was the only black female doctor practicing in Harlem at the time and served at the Edgcombe Sanatorium throughout the 1930s. Willis Cummings, one of two black graduates among 259 students at the University of Pennsylvania School of Dentistry in 1919, was the first black inductee of a dental honor society and lived and practiced in the district as well. The cornerstone of the Harlem Renaissance was education, specifically that knowledge of African history gave a greater sense of self-confidence and purpose to the artists and writers within the community. Charles Seifert resided at 317 West 137th Street, where he opened the Ethiopian School of Research History in the 1920s. During the Great Depression, Seifert School became the Charles C. Seifert Library. Seifert lectured until his death in 1949. Later, in the 20th century, Dr. John Henrik Clark, an author, educator, historian, and pioneer of Pan-African studies, lived at 223 West 137th Street. The street was later named John Henrik Clark Place in his honor. These two homes served not only as private residences, but served as public archives for the Harlem Intellectual Community. The proposed historic district is significant for its association with these notable African-American pioneers, practitioners, and creatives from the 1920s to the 1940s. This map shows many of the significant buildings and sites I just discussed, located across both sections of the proposed district. In addition to its notable cultural significance, the proposed district is characterized by remarkably cohesive streetscapes, and the next slides show some of our analysis of the district. As we've seen, speculative building results in phased development of the streets in an overall pattern from the South to North, and yielded a building stock constructed between 1880 and 1930 in cohesive rows. The single building built after 1930 is the Beulah Wesleyan Methodist Church on 136th Street, which is shown here on the far right. This slide illustrates examples of the proposed historic district's building stock by their date of construction. And while they are architecturally cohesive, blocks in the proposed historic district include a variety of building types, mostly residential, including rowhouses, apartment buildings, and mixed-use buildings, residential above-ground-floor storefronts, and institutional buildings that serve the neighborhood, including a number of significant churches. Rowhouses dominate the streets within the area, whereas the mixed-use buildings and multifamily dwellings tend to be mostly present on the avenues. And this slide illustrates these typologies in the district. Most blocks represent the works of one or two architects on behalf of one or two developers. The vast majority of the district's buildings are representative of the Renaissance Revival and Queen Anne styles, with select structures in the Romanesque Revival neo-Grec and Beaux-Arts styles, churches in the Gothic Revival and modern styles, and apartment structures in the Art Deco and Viennese Secession styles. And some of those examples are shown here. And finally, the proposed district shows a remarkable degree of architectural integrity with limited alterations. By our metric, it is really mostly intact, as shown here in the darker green. With its highly intact streetscapes of late 19th century and early 20th century architecture, and rich associations with the Harlem Renaissance and civil rights movements, the proposed historic district is an important reminder of both the early development of the neighborhood, as well as the contributions of the African-American community to the history of New York City and the nation. As we are approaching the 100-year anniversary of the Harlem Renaissance, it's particularly important and appropriate time to recognize and celebrate the significant cultural and social history of this neighborhood, along with its intact and meritorious architecture. The research department strongly recommends the commission calendar the proposed district for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. That was a great presentation. Commissioners, do we...oh, yes, I see we have one question, so we'll start there. Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, Kate, there are three places that are carved out, or appear to be very intentionally carved out, of the district. or appear to be very intentionally carved out of the district. One is on the northwest corner of the district between Edgcombe and Saint Nick's. The second one is on, there are two buildings on West one thirty-seventh, just west of Frederick Douglass. And the third one is a single building on West one thirty-sixth, east of Frederick Douglass. Is there, can you talk to us about those particular carve-outs?
Sure. Along Frederick Douglass, there are rows for several blocks of kind of low-scale buildings that were built in the nineteen nineties. So they do not have historic character or contribute to the history of the district that we found here. And in board of that, I think the one building you pointed out on one thirty-seventh is another new building. And then the northwest corner is an apartment building, which has been heavily altered. And so it doesn't have the same architectural character, nor does it have the same cultural significance where we found in other buildings where we know of important people having been.
Yeah, I'm not sure you covered the ones I was talking about. I understand the buildings that are facing Frederick Douglass. But on one thirty-seventh, it seems that there's two buildings on the map I'm looking at that are next to each other at the end of a row on West one thirty-seventh. And are those two, are you saying those two are modern buildings?
Yeah.
And then, and then on West one thirty-sixth, there's another one stray right there at the far west end. Is that also a modern building?
I'm not sure which one. Oh, let's do the Saint Nicholas Historic District.
I'm sorry?
No, Kate, it's down on one hundred and thirty-sixth, on the north side of one hundred and thirty-sixth Street.
The buildings were, thanks. Again, either new construction or very heavily altered. So the complete historic rows are included within these boundaries.
Perhaps at the next presentation, we can see what those buildings look like.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson. Just accept my request to unmute.
Are markers placed on these buildings that tell who lived there and at what point in time when we designate the area? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We do, the landmarks, it's not coming to me. We do have, there is a plaques program available for individual landmarks. And for historic districts, we also have historic district markers that can be placed in districts that outline that history. In terms of plaques on individual buildings in the district noting who was there, I'm not sure there's a specific mechanism for that, but I think that could be something that, you know, we continue to talk about because there is such great and broad cultural significance here.
Yeah, and I think it's important that when you walk the streets, you can look up and say someone lived there, who he was, or at least have a memory of that person, especially in this particular district, I know all districts, but this one in particular. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, and just sort of follow up on that. In addition to, you know, plaques that we might approve if a building owner sought to install a plaque, we have, in addition to the historic district markers, which is a program that we administer that we can really, where we can really outline this history and make it public, we have also been creating story maps, as you know. And so we did a very exciting interactive story map for the Central Harlem West one hundred and thirty-first, one hundred and thirty-second Street Historic District that allowed you to pop open any building and you could look at it on an iPhone or on a cellphone as you're walking down the street and pop on any building and you'll get a pop-up with the information. So that's another way we've tried to leverage technology to help raise awareness and tell those stories.
I must admit, this is magnificent job you guys are doing. I mean, it's just wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Can we just point out that I believe there were some information circulating related to some sites that were, had demolition permits on them? Can we identify where those are?
Yeah.
So there is, demolition permits have been issued for the church at the corner of one fortieth Street and Edgcombe Avenue, which is up here at this top corner. So the church and two adjacent row houses, which are used, former church, it's no longer a church.
Thank you.
So, you know, and my hope is, and our hope is that, you know, that we see this building retained as an anchor on this street. But it's very likely that there could be some activity during our process and we will then have to think about what that means for our boundaries in our district when we get there. We'll see what happens.
I guess an associated question is, what do we know? I mean, if the, the sites along Frederick Douglass are new construction sites, right? They're not, they're relatively recent. Is that true for the ones between one thirty-eighth and one thirty-ninth as well?
Between one thirty-eighth and one thirty-ninth is a collection of buildings that includes some new buildings and some altered buildings. So as, they really don't create a historic, complete historic character or a sense of place there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I would also point out that as we've been working closely with Community Board Ten and their preservation plan, they also exclude this thoroughfare, I think, recognizing the challenges of the new construction and the altered fabric. Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, could some, could someone walk us through the implications of that demolition permit? You know, in other words, you know, if they go forward, since it was issued before we took any action, is there anything we can do to prevent that from happening other than discussion? And then if we designate, permits out there, the building isn't demolished, we designate, what's the impact from there? You know, can it still be demolished? And if it is demolished, do we regulate what's constructed on that site? So what's the sequence there?
So, yeah, I think there's a number of possible scenarios and it really depends on what the building owner does. But if they act on that permit prior to our designating it, there really isn't anything we can do. They can do that almost, you know, at any given time. And so then we may be confronted with a vacant lot on the edge of the district. And that is something that the commission has historically not, tended not to include for a variety of reasons, and we can discuss, have that discussion. Then if it does not get pulled prior to a vote on designation, and if we vote to designate it with these boundaries, then the site would be in the district, but could still, and if the permit is still valid, they could still demolish the building. And then we do have a vacant lot in the historic district. And the third possible scenario is that they, we designate it and they don't act on that permit and that permit expires. And then, and then we're in a position where we are able to then regulate any new permits that would affect this church and row houses.
Just to follow up on that, there is no construction permit associated with the demo permit. It's just a demo permit.
Correct. I mean, yeah, I think there's something active but not issued yet.
Right, so commissioners, the landmarks law says that if a DOB permit has been issued prior to designation, it is grandfathered. And the work may happen after designation without landmarks review.
What is the expiration date?
The, it's not about being expired. The question is whether, I mean, the permit is, has been issued and now it currently is actually in an expired mode because the general contractor is being swapped out. But that's a ministerial action and it's our understanding that they're filing for a new GC or have already, actually. And so that permit has been issued and will be valid and will be valid as long as they continue to work on it, if they continue to work for it.
So as long as they continue to show work, it remains valid? Commissioner Gustafson?
What happens if we calendar, the demo permit is out there, right? We calendar and then they file for, they file plans for a new building? Does DOB have to come to us?
So what happens when, when a property is calendared and the property is already, the property is calendared and somebody files for a DOB permit that has not already been issued, new permit, that permit is held up for a period of time and up to the, you know, the maximum statutory time that DOB can hold a permit, which is forty days. And so that would, in some cases, particularly when we're looking at individual landmarks, gives the landmarks commission time to act before something can be issued. In the case of a historic district, that's not always possible, but we'll have to sort of see how that works. But I think the, you know, the first critical permit that we're struggling with is this permit to demolish the building. Mark, did you want to add anything or correct anything I said?
No, 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 it's perfectly accurate. And I just, I think commissioners, just, you know, obviously demolition permit is a very extreme situation. But for districts, it is not unusual for work to be occurring during, with this forty-day protocol during the course of our reviewing, you know, and doing the research and doing all the work that needs to happen to do a district. So it's, you know, that's, that happens on occasion. It's not unusual. Demolitions aren't that common, but, you know, they do happen as well.
Yeah, so when a historic district is calendered, there's often work that continues to go on during that period. But we at least have an opportunity to use our powers of persuasion and influence that work because there is that hold. So it gives us an opportunity to talk to people. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, it's kind of a follow-up to what you just said. I was wondering if there are ongoing conversations with the developer?
We have been talking to them. Any other questions? Okay, well, you know, I mean, you know, while this corner is of concern and, you know, we certainly hope that there's a positive outcome here that protects this corner. You know, and so I do want to say that on the whole, I'm terribly excited about this entire district. Both of these sections have a number of buildings that are significant and contribute, including a number of other religious properties that are important to the architectural and social and cultural history here. And, you know, and I'm so excited, as Kate said, we've been prioritizing studies in Harlem, particularly in Community Board Ten. And as a result, we have in recent years designated the Mount Morris Park Extension, the Central Harlem. And over the last almost year and a half, we've done an extensive study of this area and commenced owner outreach and had several meetings with the owners in the past fall. So this has been a great amount of work and we're really excited about it. Excited that we're able to keep coming back to this neighborhood while we continue to look across the city equitably. And these historic districts, the ones that we've already designated, as well as the one we're proposing today, all have striking streetscapes that embody the rich cultural and social history of Harlem. And this particular district has a variety of building types and styles that tell the story of the neighborhood's African American residents, including notable African Americans in the fields of politics, literature, healthcare, and education during the Harlem Renaissance. And as we're approaching the hundredth anniversary of the Harlem Renaissance, I can't think of a better time to calendar these two sections of this historic district. So I would like to make a motion that we move to calendar this and have a public hearing in the future. So Commissioner Goldblum, would you second my motion?
Happily, seconding the motion.
Thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's calendared and we will have a public hearing in the spring. I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item. The next item is another item that we're proposing to be calendared. And it is an item that Kate has to be recused on. So Kate will be leaving us and the presentation will be led by Timothy Frye, our Director of Strategic Planning and Special Projects. Tim, I'll turn it over to you.
Oops. Thank you. The item before you, LP two six five two, is New York Public Library Harlem Branch in the Borough of Manhattan, Manhattan Block seventeen twenty-two, Lot thirty. The New York Public Library Harlem Branch is a Andrew Carnegie-funded library that was built between nineteen oh seven and nineteen oh nine for the New York Public Library system. And I'm trying to advance my slides. There we go. Good morning, commissioners. The New York Public Library Harlem Branch is one of sixty-seven circulating libraries constructed with funding from industrialist Andrew Carnegie in the early twentieth century for the city's three library systems and is one of twelve Carnegie branches designed for the New York Public Library by the prominent firm of McKim, Mead, and White. In addition to its architectural significance, the library nurtured African American cultural and intellectual life, especially during the Harlem Renaissance. Located on one hundred and twenty-fourth Street near Fifth Avenue, the library is in south-central Harlem, across from Marcus Garvey Park and near the designated Mount Morris Park Historic District and Extension. The proposed New York Library Harlem Branch consists of the lot and the library building. Harlem Branch can trace its origins to the Harlem Library, established as a privately operating subscription library in eighteen twenty-five, when Harlem was just an isolated village, then centered around Third Avenue. In the late nineteenth century, as development spread westward, the trustees of the Harlem Library purchased the lot and erected a new building at one hundred and twenty-third Street, shown here in the image on the left. And this building housed both the library and income-producing apartments above. The building is currently located in the Mount Morris Historic District. In nineteen oh three, the Harlem Library, which had just become a free circulating library in eighteen ninety-seven, joined the New York Public Library's circulating branch system. In nineteen oh six, the New York Public Library Site Selection Committee purchased the site at West one hundred and twenty-fourth Street. And in January nineteen oh nine, the Harlem Branch, shown here on the right, opened in its new location with room for more books and services. Harlem Branch reflects the history of 20th-century Harlem and its changing demographics. When it first opened, the area around what is now Marcus Garvey Park was predominantly white. And following World War I and the geopolitical changes in Europe, many immigrants from Northern Europe appear in the census rolls and the branch was the repository of the New York Public Library's circulating collection of Finnish-language books. In the 1930s, the neighborhood population changed again as Harlem's African-American communities expanded into South Central Harlem, and the Harlem Branch refocused its services and programs to meet their needs. As civic space, the library served an important role in fostering cultural life of African-Americans in Harlem, particularly during the Harlem Renaissance. For example, in the late 1930s and early 40s, the Harlem Branch provided a home for one of the seminal community theater groups, the Rose McLendon Players and Workshop Theater, followed by serving as a temporary home of the Schaumburg Collection during the enlargement of the facility at 131st Street or 35th Street. The Rose McLendon Players and Workshop Theater was established in 1938 by Dick Campbell, his wife actress Muriel Ron, and George Norford, who were motivated by the growing dissatisfaction with the types of opportunities and roles available to African-American actors on Broadway. The following year, the company began its short residence in the Harlem Branch, and among the company's alumni was the actor-director activist Ossie Davis, shown here on the right with his wife Ruby D., who referred to the library as, quote, "the only home I had, the very temple of my existence, my craft, the place that trained me, the first institution to welcome me," unquote. Harlem Branch has continued to serve the needs of the community residents with print and electronic resources and a range of programs, including exhibits, musical events, literary discussions, and vocational training. After renovation completed in 2004, the Harlem Branch broadened its services with a new auditorium and a dedicated literary center, or literacy center, excuse me. Harlem Branch is one of five Carnegie libraries in Harlem, each designed by McKim, Mead, and White. From left to right is the 135th Street Branch, now part of the Schaumburg Center for Research and Black Culture, the 125th Street Branch, the 115th Street Branch, now Harry Belafonte 115th Street Branch, and Hamilton Grange Branch, all of which are designated City Land-- New York City landmarks. Harlem Branch building has changed little over time. The classically-influenced limestone facade is raised on a low granite base and features large recessed arched openings decorated with rosettes at the first story and alternating rondelles and diamond-shaped lazarus at the second. The window openings at the third story are flat-headed with simple surrounds slightly recessed from the plane of the wall. Double-height pilasters with Corinthian columns, capitals frame the fenestration of the second and third stories, their bases resting on a denticulated sil chorus-- the second story, excuse me-- below the dentic-- excuse me while I struggle with this word-- denticulated cornice, the frieze bears the words "New York Public Library," separated by plaques in the form of open books with fleur-de-lis. Under the careful stewardship of the New York Public Library, the 1990s access ramp reused part of the original granite stew, and the 2004 renovation included sensitive alterations to the exterior, such as the replacement of entrance doors and windows at the ground floor to reflect the original design. New York Public Library's Harlem Branch, with its important connection to the legacy of the Rose McLendon Players and African-American art, artistic and intellectual expression, has retained its elegant classical simplicity and dignity and continues to serve its South Central Harlem community as it has for more than a century. The research staff recommends that it be added to the commission's calendar for consideration as a New York City landmark, and that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, do we have any questions about this item? Yes, Commissioner Gustafson?
Sorry, I'm the annoying one today. We noted earlier that the other four McKim, Mead, and White libraries in Harlem were all previously designated. What was it that was holding us up on this one? One would think we would have considered this previously.
Well, as you may know, there are, you know, many Carnegie libraries, and the commission has a long history of approaching them and designating them. And I think we have identified different libraries at different times, given the agency's priorities at those particular periods. So we may be looking in one section or another section of, even in one particular neighborhood. And so, you know, there may be a different history related to different priorities that the agency is working on or different sections of neighborhoods that the agency is working on. So, you know, I think that we have a very good relationship with the New York Public Library and we are frequently in conversations with them about their Carnegie libraries and which ones we would like to designate at any given time. But we sort of do that in an iterative way as it relates to the agency's priorities at any given time. And the library has always been supportive of us. So we are, you know, we're very grateful for that working relationship. And I think also I would add that they are very, you know, they are very aware and proud of their Carnegie libraries. And so these buildings, as we, you know, continue to look at them over periods of time, are not in any imminent threat. And in fact, you know, often the library will consult with us as they're making changes. Okay, any other questions? Okay, so with that, then I would, you know, this is a particularly, they're all, you know, the McKim, Mead, and White Carnegie libraries are all sort of classical revival and style and limestone, and they have a very similar appearance, but their details are different, their expressions are all slightly different and unique to each site. And this is a particularly fine library and its architectural expression is quite beautiful. I think the photographs really don't do it justice. So I think that, you know, given its fine architecture and its importance in reflecting this particular community and its service to this community, I would like to make a motion that we move forward and calendar this item for future public hearing. All right, and Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this item is also calendared and will hold a future public hearing, most likely in the spring as well. Thank you. Thank you very much and thanks to the research team. And we will now move to our Preservation Department agenda. And we'll turn it over to Corey Harala, our Director of Preservation, and he will momentarily get the slides switched.
Hey, thank you, Sarah, and we will pause for just a moment to make sure we have the applicant team in the meeting. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and begin reading the item into the record and have a couple of other notes, and then we'll begin from there. So we are going to start the Preservation Department agenda with public meeting items this morning, the first of which is item number one, LPC 21-03229, An Application for a Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 544, Lot 72, 27 East 4th Street in the NoHo Historic District Extension. This is a garage and repair shop designed by Herman Cronin, built in 1945 to 46. The application is to demolish the existing building and construct a new building. Please note that at the public hearing of January 12th, 2021, the proposal was presented and public testimony was heard, but due to the late hour in which it concluded, the hearing was closed and the applicants did not have the opportunity to respond to testimony, nor did the Commissioners discuss the proposal or take any action at that time. Therefore, in continuation of the process, the applicant team is here to respond to testimony and answer questions after we open the proceedings.
Terry, I'm muted.
And if we can just note that Commissioners Gustafson, Chapin--
Commissioner Chapin--
Gustafson-- and Goldblum are recused.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, and so Commissioners, we will, as it's a continuation of the public hearing, we'll make a motion to open the hearing. Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you make that motion?
Exactly, opening the proceedings, thank you.
Opening proceedings. Okay, and Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we've opened the proceedings so that we may continue our discussion. The applicants will be responding to the public testimony and then we'll be asking questions and then having comments. So the applicants may begin at this time.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is George Schiferdicker. I trust everyone can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. And I am with BKSK Architects. I have with me Joe Vavino of BKSK, who will handle the screen sharing duties, and Carl Rubenakker from GMS Structural Engineers, who can address any questions on the structural design. It's my understanding that I need to quickly run through the original presentation and remind everybody about it, so I'll do that as quickly as I can and highlight a couple of key elements and then respond primarily to criticism and comments that were made on the structural portion.
Right, and so just to be clear, if we had continued the hearing that day, we would have asked the conclusion of the testimony, asked you if you would like to respond to the testimony. So that's what you're doing now. I think most everybody remembers that the proposal is for a new building, the demolition of this garage building and this new building, but you could quickly run through it, but really focus on your response to the testimony.
Okay, I'll try to do that. A neat-story building for this site was proposed earlier by the owner. The design required a variance. It received approval from the Landmarks Preservation Commission and the City Planning Commission, but was turned down at the city council. Current proposal is a seven-story building with a single setback and full conformance with New York City zoning. Next. A one-story garage building currently occupies the site. We're proposing its demolition, similar to what was approved by the commission previously. Next. The site, again, is located on East 4th Street, between Merchants' House Museum to the west, classic nine-story loft building to the east. At the rear of the site is an historic alleyway that is not a public way. Next. Up until the 1940s, the site was occupied by a four-and-a-half-story townhouse. The party wall with the merchants' house entirely on our site remains. Please note the historic stepping up of scale of the merchants' house from the merchants' house. Our current redesign recalls that stepping up. Next. This sheet shows the previous proposal on the left and our current proposal in the center with a section through it on the right. Primary difference is current proposal is a setback and is seven stories in height. The street wall is 11 feet lower than the previous proposal. Next. Setbacks are a feature of current zoning and already in evidence on this street. Next. Our proposal is well within the scale of the block. Our block is marked by a diverse scale and our proposal falls in a middle ground between the scale of our two neighbors. Next. Joe, let's skip this slide. Next. The elements of our proposed-- back one. Thank you. The elements of our proposed design are drawn from the character of the NoHo Historic District and the historic districts in close proximity to the site. Materiality, terracotta is a featured material on many buildings. Coloration and brick, the use of molded brick up against materials with a similar coloration is also a theme seen often in the district. Next. Our proposed design uses these elements in a contemporary expression. We have tried to be simple, understated, and straightforward so as not to compete with a merchants' house and recognize merchants' house importance on the streetscape, but also that we remain clear about the architecture of our building as of our time. With that in mind, our design proposes an aesthetic of basic brick facade, punched openings, language of terracotta screen elements, and metal trim. Next. Moving from the bottom of the building up, the scale of the base is in keeping with the commercial building of the district. There's a floor-to-floor height of 16 feet 5 inches and a 12-foot-high storefront. Terracotta screen elements sit in front of the metal trim initially, then in front of the windows of the second floor, and a horizontal metal cornice element defines the transition in the top of the storefront. Next. The middle floors have tall triple-hung windows with the lowest pane fixed up to a sill height. Terracotta screen sits in front of the window to that sill height and in front of the metal pilasters between the windows at the sides. Next. The four-across organization of the windows and their proportions are meant to serve as a functional purpose and to recall the history of the site. Functional purposes that the interior may want to be divided into two spaces. Generally, windows in the buildings representative of the district character are grouped in a continuous horizontal reading, decide whether or not, or even number of days. The history of the site is subtly recalled in the window proportions, with the terracotta screens overlapping and the substantial dimension between windows, we recall a residential window proportion. And with the overall size of the windows and the continuity side to side, we allude to the window proportions of industrial loft buildings. Next. At the top of our proposed design, the terracotta screen becomes a cornice element. On the facade of the setback floor, we use the terracotta screening, and the facade brick is twisted into the lot line at the exposed southeast corner of our building. Next. The rear of our building is a utilitarian expression. On the left is the previous design. Please keep in mind the rear facade is only visible from the private alleyway. At the top right are the materials of the bulkheads and mechanical screening. Next. The view of our proposed design from the street east and west shows the stepping massing. One thing that I wanted to emphasize, it didn't really come out very much in the previous presentations, but I think it is very important to make the point here that regarding the presence of the merchants' house on the street, we feel that our proposal benefits the streetscape and the appearance of the merchants' house enormously. The merchants' house was not built as a standalone building with empty lots to either side. A continuous street wall is much more in keeping with the historic presence of the merchants' house and the character of the district. Next. The previous proposal for the site is on the left and the current proposal is on the right. Our design is a single-story less in height and it is set back at the top floor. It is deeper on the site to utilize the full-floor area ratio available. But contrary to much of the testimony, it is in fact less massive for the length of the merchants' house and thus clearly an improvement in terms of the weight that bears on the foundation alongside the museum. Next. The next proportion of our presentation is devoted to structural design considerations, which I think took up the balance or the majority of opposition comments last time we had our discussion. I think the overriding point I wish to make in this quick summary of the structural design and answer some of the issues that brought up is that the owner and ownership team have been and remain totally committed to the preservation and protection of the merchants' house. The ample testimony of the importance of the house to the city's history and to many individuals was moving. It is clearly a treasure and we appreciate the attention the Landmarks Commission has paid to concern for its protection. Its incomparable value is something that we can all agree on. However, the notion which some who stand in opposition to our proposal suggests, namely that any construction adjacent to the merchants' house will result in its destruction, is a gross misstatement. This simple graphic is a historic chronicle of all of the construction and demolition that has occurred during the lifetime of the museum. Every parcel that has undergone demolition or construction is outlined, and basically every parcel within 200 feet of the museum has seen construction and/or demolition, and through this long, almost 200-year history, the merchants' house has remained intact. Over the same time period-- time period, regulations pertaining to construction have grown more carefully calibrated and stringent. The engineering related to understanding foundations and soils has grown more sophisticated, and the monitoring of adjacent structure has gotten more accurate and more pronounced. Our structural design adheres to all regulations and goes above and beyond what would normally be required, and we have worked to safeguard the merchants' house as best as possible. Next. So in the interim, we've been aware that our, made aware that our structural design has been reviewed by Donald Friedman of Old Structures at the behest of the Landmarks Commission staff. We very much appreciate this third-party unbiased review. His basic analysis is that, quote, "The structural drawings are complete and well-designed," unquote. Our structural engineer has submitted our responses to the questions raised in Old Structures to letters, and we look forward to any additional review or discussions with Old Structures that become part of this Landmarks approval should that approval be forthcoming. We have also reached out to the New York City Parks Department in the interim and have had a productive dialogue about scheduling a meeting to review the structural design and answer any questions to assure current staff at Parks that everything is being done in accordance with all applicable codes and regulations, that additional measures have been taken to further safeguard the merchants' house, and that we are willing to consider any reasonable additional requests. We will also be talking about what to do with the active chimneys of the museum. There are a number of possibilities. I'd like to quickly run through our original presentation to summarize some key points and especially highlight elements of our design and monitoring that are in addition to regulatory mandates. One very unique quality to our site is that the existing lot line walls of the original four-and-a-half-story townhouse on our site remain intact below grade and for the full height of the merchants' house. Our design deliberately does not bear on that wall or into it. Next. The test pit shown at the lower right is as much information as we currently have on the subject of the foundation issue that Commissioner Devonshire raised at the last hearing. We would appreciate any information that was documented by the merchants' house regarding this condition and have offered to redo our test pit in that area to assess the presence of any foundation material beyond the foundation of the east wall of our site. Next. The geotechnical information on our site adjacent to the merchants' house is available for review, and it reveals that there is good quality soil with good bearing capacity. Next. The area in blue denotes that part of the basement of our proposal where a benched foundation design is being implemented. That is area that we have forfeited so that there will be no underpinning required under our wall at the side of the merchants' house. Next. This graphic shows in section the benching of our foundation to avoid any underpinning of our wall adjacent to the merchants' house. Also note the fact that our structure bypasses the wall, which is the remnant of the old historic building on our site. It is also important to note that our building will serve as a shield against the weather and wind affecting the merchants' house, and that we have offered to have our structure brace the merchants' house structure. The Parks Department deems that advantageous. Next. Number of items that have been included in the sequence, sequencing of construction to avoid vibration and protect the excavation, there are the use of augured piles instead of any driven piles and the retention of the existing roof until excavation is complete to protect the site from any adverse effects from erosion during construction. Next. The overall sequence of construction is presented in this slide and can be further discussed with Old Structures and Parks Department engineers to minimize any vibration and provide any additional shoring requested. Next. This slide presented the monitoring and protection program proposed. Please note, as a reminder, that the middle column of items that are, that, that, the middle column of items is in excess of regulatory requirements, including increased frequency of readings for displacement to detect any motion earlier, addition of tilt monitoring, and an increase in the review threshold of vibration monitoring. Next. As I have indicated, we are scheduling a meeting with the New York City Parks Department to bring all parties together to continue to review and assess the best method, best methods for the protection of the merchants' house, and we would welcome the continued participation of the LBC's reviewing engineer, Don Friedman of Old Structures. Next. Thank you for your continued time and attention. That's it for us.
Okay, thank you very much. So Commissioners, as the applicant noted, we have asked because of the sensitive nature of this work and the potential impact on our adjacent individual and interior landmark, we asked our engineer, Don Friedman of Old Structures, to evaluate the proposed plans, and his report has been shared with you all as you know. So he is here today as well. So if you have any questions for the applicant or for Don Friedman, please raise your hand and we'll, we'll get to all of them. So feel free to do it in any order you wish. I'm going to start with Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Thanks. The applicant mentioned something about bracing the, the historic building adjacent, and I'm wondering, I, I want for you to expand on that, please, and a little bit more about the protection to the historic building, and whether or not, you said that you're going to enter into conversations or discussions about that and wondering what you already know and have planned.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk briefly and then I'll let Carl Ruben Akker of GMS expand on it, but maybe we can move to a slide. Let's see, that, that shows a little bit of the section, Joe. That's, yeah, that's good enough. That's perfect. So first of all, obviously, a building on, alongside the merchants' house will provide additional shelter from any wind load that could be applied to the, to the house from the west. Secondarily, as we noted earlier, there are basic structure, let's see if I can just quickly annotate it here. Our basic structure goes parallel to and, and over and above this green walled section, which is an existing wall.
Go to that previous slide too, to show the structure.
Yes, thank you. There you go. That's perfect. And essentially avoids any contact with this wall because it has contact with the merchants' house. We have the opportunity as we go up to actually brace that wall or to stay completely clear of it. So that's a discussion we're happy to have with both Don Friedman and the New York City Parks Department as to what might be the best approach for long-term preservation of the merchants' house. Carl, did you want to add?
I think, no, I think that's fair. I think that, you know, as would be typical at the ground floor level, I don't know if I can annotate it too, but at the ground floor level, we would anticipate a lateral connection there, you know, at the ground floor level to the, to the, to the masonry wall. Currently in the design, there's a gap at the second floor, but that could easily be connected as well. That's, that's an engineering discussion. The default would be to leave them unconnected and have a seismic gap, but it would be relatively easy to connect it if, if, personally, I think that probably would help the merchants' house, but that's, that's a choice.
This connection wouldn't have to be a rigid connection, right?
Just a lot, not vertical, just, just lateral, you know, lateral connection, given that we have, you know, we'll have a, a robust lateral system in our new building, so that would be a benefit.
Was that a question I didn't hear? It didn't come across?
No, that, I said that could be a benefit.
Okay. Commissioner Devonshire?
Thank you, Sarah. One of my concerns at the last hearing was with regard to the zone of influence and what remaining structural issues, yeah, what structural elements actually exist on the merchants' house museum. And if, if I may, I want to look at Don Friedman's letter for a second. And his point number three, "The western third of the merchants' house cellar is shown on the BKSK presentation and the GMS drawings as unexcavated, with a masonry foundation wall inboard of the lot running north-south at this floor only. This is an odd configurations, and the drawings are presumably based on actual observation." What I would like to know is what actual observation the applicant has made. You know, I, I am, I am working from a, a fortunate or unfortunate position of having completed an historic structure report more than 30 years ago of the merchants' house museum, and the, that inboard foundation wall that they show is in fact a stone wall. At the top of that stone wall, however, there are several cavities, and you can shine a flashlight westward from the east face of that wall, and you see another foundation wall, and this is within the cellar. Okay? So what that says to me is there is a foundation wall that is not shown on any of these drawings. It suggests that there has not been an adequate amount of investigation into the merchants' house construction. The other issue that I would, that I would say is that, yes, they, they refer to the basement level as a rubble wall. The, the stone masonry, it is all schist, is, was presumably constructed with a high lime mortar. Also, I, I would note that the, that inboard wall that they show does not go completely from the north to the south. It terminates partially through the cellar and turns and heads west. So that's not really a, a complete foundation wall. One of the issues that we found at the merchants' house museum after we did our historic structure report was that because of the thorough seal parging that had been applied to the exposed brick of the west party wall, any water getting into that wall, which it was happening at that point because the coping stones, the joints in the coping stones were open. Water would get in, the lime in the mortar would go into solution, and we had a considerable amount of efflorescence on the interior walls where the lime, the calcium had recalcified. I can only assume that that's the same situation below grade where there is capillary action sucking water into that foundation wall and, and again, taking the lime, putting it in solution, and causing it to effloresce on the dry side of that wall. The problem we had with the, the brick masonry on the party wall is that the lime was gone. We could actually pop the thorough seal, pull the bricks out, and sand would pour out of the joints there. I can only imagine that that's the same situation with the, the foundation wall in the cellar that they don't even show in this drawing. So what I would like to know is, is what, presumably what on-site or what other investigation have they done? Have they talked to the merchants' house museum? Have they gone into the cellar and actually seen what's going on there? Did their, did their probes within the garage show anything in that area? I need to know in order to, to even start thinking about the new building, what has been done to ensure that that wall exists, doesn't exist, or, or whatever.
Okay, so I think, first off, I think that we would welcome any additional information that the merchants' house owners could provide.
That's okay, but I would like to know what investigation you have done to determine how to design your foundation.
There were test pits, there were test pits on our side. I don't know how to do this. Test pits on our side right here, right? And I believe that, I wasn't there personally for the test pit. The geotechnical engineer did the test pit. I believe that they rotted through and did not find the foundation underneath, but again, as, as George mentioned before, we're, ownership on our side is willing to do another test pit and confirm what's happening over there. I believe the surveyor in the beginning of the project went into the, into the cellar of the merchants' house, and again, we're willing to take a look. I don't think we're at liberty to start digging holes in the merchants' house. That would be above and beyond, right, to be doing work in your neighbor's property is not something we normally would do.
Would you not consider including that before you create your design?
We, we know where the foundation of the, of the green wall is. To go below that would be, be an improper design, right? We're, we're being very careful. We've stepped the foundation back regardless of, of the situation on the other side.
But your, your zone of influence shows nothing with regard to a foundation wall at the merchants' house museum, correct?
Could I just say one thing? We, I, I think that one of the things that we would very much like to have is there's a report and, and any related photographs and evidence that exists so that we could actually have a look at those, the condition that you're talking about. Today, we haven't been able to secure access to that report. It would be very interesting for us to see.
Okay. What has happened in the past is- Report again, saying that this is an odd configuration and the drawings are presumably based on actual observation. Were they based on actual observation?
Can I skip up to a slide, Joe? One more?
That's a yes or no question.
Yes, they were. You can see in, in the next one, I think. So this was the work of our surveyor. This was done substantially a long time ago, and he observed the condition of the, the wall being back from, in an easterly direction from the existing wall in the basement. So that's as much information as we currently have on the condition of the basement that you're talking about. You just mentioned, and that's the first time I've heard about it, that you feel that this wall here actually migrates further west as it goes north or of the point, so.
So no one on your team has been in the cellar of the merchants' house museum?
Surveyors were at some point in the past, and I suspect others were as well, but not currently.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to actually to follow up on that line of questioning, Commissioner Devonshire. I'd like to ask Don Friedman if he would like to comment on processing and sequencing and sort of getting at the essence of your question. So Don, would you mind adding your thoughts at this time?
Sure. Well, I would suggest, if possible, to the design team, if, if, it seems as if another test pit or two could be dug on the garage side, a, a, a small test pit can go below the existing foundation of the, the old 27-wall without endangering it, and that would expose, certainly would expose, if there is a merchants' house museum foundation wall that extends down, that would be visible at that time. Its condition would be visible. I, I do think that if we could get in some manner permission for the design team to go into the cellar of the merchants' house, it would be very helpful, because as I said in my letter, I, I have a question about what, what the consistency of the material in that unexcavated space in the merchants' house museum is, that it's competent material to, to serve, to spread the foundation loads. So I, I do, I agree with Commissioner Devonshire that some more investigation may be required. I, I don't know how extensive it needs to be in order to answer his questions. I don't think it necessarily has to be all that much in order to get answers to these questions, because it's a small building and the condition should be visible from limited test pits and perhaps from within the cellar of the, of the merchants' house.
I also add that-
Go ahead, George.
Could I also add that, that, you know, we do understand that, that water migration through that wall could be a, a problem, and obviously the work that we would be doing would be mitigating that as, as the building goes up and, and the top of the wall is ever more protected by our building. I think that was mentioned in Don's report.
Thank you. Commissioner Bland?
Thank you. I think my, my question is rhetorical at best, so maybe it's in the form of a comment. I was particularly persuaded by a lot of the testimony, but particularly by the director, who I, as I recall, stated that because of this construction, she would have to remove everything from, from the house, the merchants' house, at some extraordinary expense, as I recall. And I'm just, I'm wondering, I mean, to some degree, this is even outside our normal purview, I suppose. Um, and I'm just, I'm wondering, I, I mean, to some degree, this is even outside our, our normal purview, I suppose. But this did strike me as an important issue to think about, um, as a citizen, if not a commissioner. And I'm just wondering, is there any construction that would occur on this property that would, uh, would not require such a dr- a, a dramatic move? Closing and removing and then reopening, et cetera, et cetera. So, Sarah, you'll understand the nature of this since, um, she's not here to respond to my, my comments and thoughts, but it does still sit with me in a, in a profound way. And I'm trying to, to understand if any construction at all here, uh, is possible. Uh, and I'm particularly wondering about if it's a story less, for instance, than is being proposed now, et cetera, et cetera. So I'll leave it at that, it's sort of a rambling, uh, uh, commentary rather than an actual question, I suppose.
And Sarah, if I could return to my previous question that was related to that, I'm sorry. Just, I, I, if I could just follow up on that, that, that was sort of where I was getting at too. Um, not so much, w- w- what kind of, what construction wouldn't, wouldn't mean that we would, that they would not have to take all of the um, stuff and sort of shut down the museum. But how would it be, might it be possible to secure the museum, cover it, to, to do something to it in order for that to not have to occur? And would the applicant, might the applicant be responsible for that?
Well, excuse me, can I, can I, Sarah, can I just step in for one second? And just, and just say that I think for purposes of this discussion, I think we all need to be clear. The statement that, that the Merchants House needs to, needs to close is based on the Merchants House, um, uh, belief that to preserve the, to make the, to take the, what they believe are, were required precautions to preserve the, uh, interior plaster work. They would need to put up all of this stuff on the inside of their building. That is what sort of is prompting the need to move everything out and close the museum, et cetera. That's my understanding of their testimony. So I think the question is kind of, instead of focusing the question on whether they feel like they have to move out, the question really is whether adjacent construction, um, what risks does it pose to the plaster work? And, uh, what reasonable risk, what can be done to, um, minimize or eliminate those risks to the greatest extent possible? Um, because that, that's sort of where we need to sort of look at, uh, make a decision here, based on that kind of criteria, not the museum's independent criteria that, that, um, they will have to move. Um, I think, so I think we need to focus on the idea that the plaster work cannot handle a, any construction. And that may be related to the question of whether the construction needs to be lower or taller, uh, or whatever. Um, but I think that's the issue, I think we should keep that in mind.
Right, so, um, so really, the, you know, in terms of independent choices, that's something that, you know, is outside, I think, a, a little bit of our, um, expertise. That would be a choice on their part based on their own, uh, professional advice. But in terms of the effect on the plaster and, um, whether or not a smaller construction would have less of an effect, or are there, uh, procedures you can take to protect that plaster? I, I'd like to actually turn to Don Friedman again to see if he can address those questions.
Um, sure, uh, a- a- as I, um, said in response to the email yesterday, uh, the, uh, there, there's no way to, to perfectly predict what is going to cause damage or not. Um, I, I mean, what causes damage to plaster is gross movement, which is to say the, the west wall of the Merchants House Museum um, tilting to the west or sinking downwards, uh, and vibration. And tho- those are the two causes of, of damage to brittle interior finishes. Um, but you can't say exactly what level is going to do it. Uh, there, it varies from one building to the next, it varies based on, uh, the history of the building, the quality of the original construction, and so on. Um, so all you can do is talk about probabilities. Uh, and there, there, there have been, i- in the presentation, there have been a number of, uh, steps taken beyond the minimum, the minimum being TPPN ten eighty-eight, uh, from the building department. Um, as I mentioned in my review letter, there are possibly other steps that can be taken, and that's something that can be discussed. Um, there is, there is literally no level of construction work that can guarantee that there won't be plaster damage because there, because if nothing is done, I can't guarantee there won't be plaster damage in the future. Um, this is an old building and it's all plaster, and the fact is the plaster is not forever. It, it, it deteriorates gradually over time, even if there is no construction next door. So I, I think that, uh, we have to take the position, in terms of the technical issues, that, um, the, the people working next door need to do what that can be done to mitigate damage. Um, and that is, that's what TPPN ten eighty, ten eighty-eight is about. That is also thirty-three years old, and perhaps we can do a little bit better than that now. Uh, but there is no guarantee, and I, I, I think that that, um, is unsettling to people.
Sarah, you're muted?
Wait, thank you, we may come around to, um, continue to sort of ask, uh, more questions in that direction. But let's move to Commissioner Holford Smith.
Yes, actually, my question was related directly to what, uh, Don was just saying. Um, I was wondering if he hadn't reviewed the GMS response to his letter uh, regarding, uh, item five point three and the movement, um, that they are providing monitoring for? And how, how the construction team can, you know, not just monitor, but sort of, how, what, how can they act quickly on the detection of any kind of, um, vibration that exceeds parameters?
I, I have not yet seen the GMS response.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
Uh, my question has to do with, um, architectural intent. I mean, it's not a technical one. Uh, the architect said that this is a building of our time, and the facade, uh, represents a building of our time. And my question is, using modeled weathered brick aesthetic, how, how does that come about in terms of our time? And why, why that material if the intent is to in the facade of our time?
What we were trying to do, obviously, is, or, or, I, I hope it's obvious, i- i- is to, um, uh, recall, um, traditions in the area of, uh, the use of molded brick and simultaneously, uh, terracotta as a material. Um, and, um, put them together in a, um, more contemporary configuration. So obviously, the terracotta is the primary ingredient for something that looks a little bit more quote-unquote of our time. Um, a system of a, a baguette, a, a screen in front of glass is, um, a, a very contemporary use of terracotta, um, that hopefully recalls a tradition i- in the area. But we're not, obviously, very deliberately not trying to be overboard in terms of our contemporary expression because we think that the Merchants House wants to be the star on the street and, and, and hopefully that, oh, that simplicity come, comes through in the design.
Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Shamir Baron, did you have another question?
No.
Or a follow-up question? Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, and I think that, um, while this was just a continuation of the hearing, we have received some additional letters, um, since the hearing, which have been shared with all of you commissioners, but we'll ask Rich to just summarize that for the record as well. Rich?
Yes, so we've received a joint letter in opposition from Councilmember Rivera and Borough President Brewer, another joint letter in opposition from Senator Hoileman and Assemblymember Glick, thirty-nine other letters in opposition from neighbors and supporters of the Merchants House, and a letter from the attorney for the Merchants House asking that no action be taken today until the Merchants House has had the opportunity to respond to the applicant's presentation. And we also received an updated number for petition signatures in opposition totaling fourteen thousand two fifty-three.
Okay, thank you. All right, and if there are no final questions, I think we'll move to our discussion. So I'm starting to request to unmute all of you. And that, and, um, you know, I think that we have had a lot of, um, information about the structural conditions. I think there are still some open questions. And, um, to the extent that you feel that you, before, uh, being able to approve a new building, you would want some of those questions to be studied further, I think that's something that is, um, appropriate to, to say in your comments. Um, similarly, if you think that, that the building design is there, one could, at this point or any other point, do a, a motion to approve with certain conditions, um, primarily that our engineer remain involved in assessing work. Um, and, or you may feel that, um, you're not comfortable at this point talking about the design at all. So, but I think to the extent that we can try to have a robust, robust set of comments, it would be helpful if you could, um, speak to your concerns about the structural issues and, and what, where you think you might be going with it. And then also address the other appropriateness issues that we normally look at with new buildings, being the height, the scale, the massing, the materiality, the composition, and the details of the design. So, um, why don't we just start, um, I'll start to my right with Vice Chair Bland, would you like to begin this one?
Um, sure. Um, I don't have an issue with the design of the building at this point. Uh, as you know, I make a point of trying not to be the designer here. Uh, and I don't find anything particularly egregiously wrong with the building. Uh, in fact, the opposite, I think it fits in with the historic uh, context of, of, of what the applicant and his architect have, have been, um, espousing now for some period of time. Um, so I'm not, I'm not going to get involved in the, I don't wish to get involved, I don't think, I need to get involved in details of the design. I accept that we have a good designer and, uh, and this is their, uh, their, their solution. I do think the reduction in height is, is been a good thing. Uh, however, that said, I'm not really prepared to vote today. I just feel uncomfortable still that there's, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm less of a structural engineer than maybe, uh, Commissioner Devonshire is. Uh, and I respect that, uh, and his abilities and, and long, um, knowledge of the, of, of the building, uh, of the Merchants House. Uh, I just think we need a little bit more information, I feel like, how can I vote? I just, you know, I, I, it's a little bit of, of, if you will, dueling, but I don't think of it as dueling. But nonetheless, uh, different points of view about the structural, um, integrity of what's being proposed. And I just can't in good conscience proceed on that basis now, one way or the other. So, again, no, no, no real issues with the design of the building, but continuing to be worried about, uh, the issues about this building uh, and, and its construction impacting the, uh, the Merchants House.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfee?
So, uh, I, I would agree, I mean, when, and whenever Michael Devonshire gets very worked out about, um, about a, uh, building or projects potential, um, structural integrity, I take note, not being an expert. And it really, uh, give, gave me a lot of pause. And I do feel that there needs to be, uh, a little more investigation into the structural conditions to make sure that the integrity of the Merchant, uh, House Museum can be, uh, sustained. And I do think it would make sense to have our, our engineer continue to work on this as part of it. So I also would not feel comfortable voting today. Um, I would, I would like to talk, I mean, does it make sense to even discuss the building?
Well, I think to the extent that we can get at least some preliminary thoughts about it, that would be helpful to have for the record.
Okay, so for the record, I, I actually think that, um, that this building is a very nice, uh, a very good contemporary expression of, um, of, of, uh, what exists, um, in, in the surrounding area. And I think the design is simple, it's understated. Um, I like the use of metal, um, to, uh, you know, create some articulation around the windows and also at the cornice. Um, I think it works at the, at the street level as well. This, this whole question about the bricks, whether or not, um, they, they should be weathered and modeled is one I'm, I'm not too concerned about, but I would, uh, if the majority of commissioners feel like it needs to be simplified, I can support that as well. I do not have a problem with the height at this particular, at this moment. I think the reduction was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Um, I can approve the building, and the question about the facade is that I think it's, 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 it works very well. I think the, the, it's arty, and it, it, it's not subordinate. I mean, this, this, when I walk by this building, I'll notice it, but I think it's appropriate. In terms of the construction, I think the technical issues will be worked out. I think the, the amount of concern that they're putting to this building, I mean, it's, it's, so I can approve it as is.
Okay, and Commissioner, uh, Gustafson, oh, sorry, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes.
Thanks.
Um, I, I think at this point, I'm with Commissioner Bland and want to have more questions that are posed by people who are, um, have more experience here than I do, um, resolved, and then move on to discussion of the proposal as well as to, um, a better understanding of what will happen with historic building.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Holford Smith?
Uh, yes, I agree, I think that we, we need some more information. Um, it seems like there need to be maybe some more test pits in the cellar and the design team really needs to get into the cellar of the Merchants House Museum to take a look at the foundation wall and really understand what that condition is. Because it's troubling to think that there, there could be a foundation wall that we don't know about. Um, I'm also concerned about the, the vibration monitoring and, and what controls will be in, put in place to act on the notification of vibration that exceeds the minimum. So I think there's just a little more dialogue that needs to happen between parks and the museum and the developer um, before we can, you know, I, I always feel comfortable with, with, um, making, you know, a decision on this. As to the design, I, I agree with most everyone else's comments, and that it's a, it's a handsome building. But I do question the thirteen-foot floor-to-floor height, I think that, that seems excessive. Um, and if you look at the building to the west, um, perhaps it could be brought more in line with that than, than the bulk wouldn't be so looming over the museum.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Devonshire?
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, with regard to the, to the design of the building, I think it's, it is generally reasonable. I, I agree with Ann that the floor-to-floor height is excessive. I think the, the building should come down probably a story and a half. And with regard to the brick facade, the, the, the use of a, a fake aged brick, uh, to me has, has really no place in New York City. You don't see it on any other buildings, I don't know where this could have come from. The salt-fretted brick is something that you see in, uh, in suburbs on, on sort of fake colonial houses. I don't think it has a place on this building. Um, all of that said, I, I, you know, I'm not going to beat the, the dead horse of my fears about the, uh, the structural issues, you know. To me, to me, Don Friedman is, is probably one of, if not the most preeminent historic preservation structural engineer in this country, he's up there in the top ten. And if he expresses discomfort with a, a plan, with a design, that's- a plan, with a design, that's enough for me. I'm not an engineer, you know, we're the, we're the cake decorators in, when it comes to historic building. But I listen to the structural engineers who I put a lot of stock in. I, I would add, with regard to the, to the closing of the house, I, you know, we were, we were consultants to the house several years ago, and when all of this first started happening, I know that the Merchant's House Museum hired a structural engineer, and the structural engineer indicated that the safest thing for them to do was get everything out of the house while the construction was going on, ensure the ceilings, not necessarily the walls, but the ceilings. And if you, if you, if you know about plaster, and I do know about plaster, because I've done a ton of it in my life, when you're plastering a ceiling, and you're pushing plaster between pieces of woodlath on a ceiling, by 10:30 a.m., you're tired, and you don't push as hard, and so the keys aren't as strong. And this is an issue that I've seen many, many, many times on lots of different buildings, Drayton Hall, Alana, a number of other historic buildings. And so I know it's going to be an issue here. They are going to have to shore these things up. And so for me, until those questions are answered with regard to the foundation, this is a non-starter.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen?
Just to put some icing on the cake, I agree with all the comments of my colleagues. They are very thoughtful, and I share their reputations, and it's legitimate, it's only prudent that we should take a look carefully at the condition behind that coating, the furrow seal, and if it's that Commissioner Devonshire described, they are legitimate concerns. So, I think that also we have, as we mentioned, we have a preeminent structural engineer for historic preservation, Donald Friedman. I think it's only prudent that the commission, additional information after also having the Merchant House have a chance to consult with the Parks Department and the applicant.
Okay, great. Thank you all, commissioners. So, we're not going to take an action today, and what I would like is for, before we have the applicants back, I would like them to continue to work with Don Friedman, and I know they've already reached out to the Parks Department after our initial public hearing, to try to schedule a, a time to meet. And I would like the Parks Department and the Merchant's House to come in good faith to agreement with the neighbor to allow them to, to, to develop a plan with safety in mind first, safety is a priority, and, and would hope that you would cooperate with that. And so I would suggest that we take no action today, have the applicants continue to work with Don Friedman, and meet with the Merchant's House to develop a response and answer some of these unanswered questions before they come back to us. In terms of design, I think it seems that it's heading in the right direction, should we get to a point where we're talking about that. Commissioner Devonshire, did you have another question?
I had another comment, Sarah, if I could. Is it too late?
Yeah, sorry. No, go ahead, please.
During, during the last hearing, the, the issue of the, of the flu on the, on the west side of the Merchant's House came up, and it, it recalled to me a, a project that we had actually, a, a similar and disastrous situation on West 18th Street several years ago. We had a client, there was a condo constructed next to their building, all of the, all of the necessary precautions were taking, taken, and the, the west half of this owner's building sunk three inches into the ground. And after having to leave their house for a year and a half, the remedial measures were taken, the condo was up, and they had to run their flues up the outside of the adjacent building. And they were only going up 25 feet, and it was necessary to install electrical vent fans at the top of those flues. We have a situation here where I, the flues, I think, will be twice that length, which means, and, and they're talking about putting those flues inside the adjacent building at 27, and there will absolutely necessarily be electrical vent fans on tops of those flues. Are they going to be operated by the neighbors? I, I think that's an issue that, that needs settling also. We'd have to have a mechanical engineer come in. I mean, Parks issues with that aside, the, the actual forensics of, of running those flues and having them operate, and, and being operated by the neighbor is, is a little troubling to me.
Yep. And absolutely, I think the applicant also indicated that there are some different options for the chimneys, and I think we should evaluate those options, some of which may be eligible ultimately for a staff level review, but they should be thought about now at the time when we're considering the new construction. And certainly to the extent that they need fans and other equipment on top of them, those should be shown to us as well. And so we'll ask them to, to continue to study that.
Thank you, Sarah. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought it up, because it is another open issue that we'd like them to address the next time they come back. So, so.
Sarah, I just have one thing I wanted to say further. In my earlier comments, I neglected to say my opposition to the current brick selection, and I just wanted to add my voice to the several others. Thank you.
Okay. Great. And we'll note that. Okay, excellent. All right. So, no action today. Applicant team, please continue to work with our engineer, Don Friedman, and continue to reach out to the Merchant's House and the Parks Department. And I would like to ask the, the Merchant's House and their team to, to work with the applicant team, so that we can ensure the greatest protection and understand the greatest needs and, and potential impacts here the next time we bring it back. So, thank you all, and we'll move to the next item.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. We're remaining in the public meeting items, and the next three are actually going to be presented together. They're under the same ownership, so I'm going to read them in, in a group, a pair and a single, but we'll be looking at them all together. So, items two and three, LPC 20-07838, and 20-07839, 76 and 78, West 82nd Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, both Renaissance Romanesque Revival style flats, buildings designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1889 to 91. Application is to legalize the replacement of ironwork at the stoop without permits. And then also, item number four, LPC 20-07840, an application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 1195, Lot 64. This is 80 West 82nd Street, AKA 451 to 457 Columbus Avenue, in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. Also, a Renaissance Romanesque Revival style flats building, this time with storefronts at the, at the ground floor, designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1890 to 91. This application is to establish a master plan governing the replacement of storefront infill signage and the installation of barrier free access ramps. And these were all read into the record at the public hearing of January 12th, 2021, but were not presented at this time, and will be for the first time today.
And the applicants have joined once we open proceedings. Sarah, unmuted.
Thank you. I'm talking and muted. Commissioners, I'm currently unmuting all of you as well, so that we can open the hearing on these. So, Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron, would you second that motion?
Second motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is open, and the applicant may begin.
Good, good morning, Commissioners. Huntley Gill from Guardi Architects, presenting this. I'm not quite sure how I get the slides to change. There we are. This is a, a building that is in the block front of Columbus Avenue between 81st and 82nd Streets, the north half of the block. And next, here's the location, and also going around the corner into West 82nd Street. Next. There are, the principal reason we're here, I hope a little less daunting than Fourth Street, is approval of a series of, of a master plan for new storefronts and restoration of the brownstone and signage here on Columbus Avenue. And then more minor is legalization of two railings that were replaced without a permit. Here are the current conditions, which you can see are pretty miserable. The next.
So, you're controlling the slides. You can just, yes, using your arrow keys or the mouse?
Gotcha. Sorry. Hold on one second. This doesn't seem to be working. Okay, sorry. We'll go back now. Here is the designation photo, and you can see that along this sign band, at some point, a whole set of kind of thin metal was covering up whatever had originally been there. And at one point in, and here it is again in detail, going around the corner into West 82nd Street, these are the two buildings adjacent. They have stoops. 80 is, have a stoop. Here, the tax photos, the 1940 showing the Ninth Avenue L. And you can see the original conditions here, which we'll look at in a little more detail. This is 1980, once this band had been put up. You can see that there's this nice detail, this brownstone detail that runs along the houses, the buildings next door. And our guess is, because there's no material left, our guess is that this continued right around to Columbus Avenue, and that these wooden signs were basically placed over that element. And you can see here, there's one sign missing. You can see the wood framing that seems to have held these. It's a pretty common condition on Columbus Avenue in those days. Again, some more tax photos to show you the building going around the corner, the storefront here, Ninth Avenue L, the endicott, my first project after I got out of Columbia Preservation School many years ago. At one point recently, on a cold winter's day, I got a phone call because some of this metal had fallen off. And the owner of the building's a very busy guy, and he's always meant to pay attention to this. He said with some embarrassment that it was probably the ugliest storefronts on Columbus Avenue, and he might be right. And this became the, the impetus to get going on, on this. You can see that the storefronts are pretty grotty, especially the one in the corner, which is the one we'd like to replace immediately. Just to flip you going from north to south through existing conditions. You can see that Schweitzer Linen occupies two bays, so it's one large store, and then the southernmost bay is two small stores. We did do probes, of course, to take a look at, to see if there was anything there underneath all of this, and it's absolutely nothing. It's just construction-grade brick with a metal lath and some sort of cementitious surface that was placed there. So, there's nothing to say, and there's no real physical evidence of what was there. The plan is, again, a master plan. We hope to go ahead right away with this store on the corner. Demolition, installation of new storefronts. You'll note that the stores are small enough so that we can do in-swing doors, which is, of course, you know, the world of retail is suffering these days, and one wants to maximize displays. So, obviously, in-swing doors without an inset is always a really helpful thing. The, we are also taking existing storefronts. You'll notice that they're pretty much flush with the, the masonry. We're setting those back to replicate the, what we believe is the original location of the storefronts, set back a little bit. The storefronts are quite regular. The proposed storefronts are quite regular. You'll see, we're proposing to restore that brownstone element that continues around from West 82nd Street, and all of this in brownstone, restored, cementitious surface to replicate brownstone. And then very simple signboards marching across each of the storefronts. They would be a powdered aluminum to match the color of the cornice. We'll see this in renderings in a moment. Again, the same condition would go around the corner into the day in West 82nd Street. Some more, some details, just give you an idea of what this brownstone element would look like, how this very simple conforming signboard would sit on it. Again, here you see the location of the storefront, set back to where it ought to be. Simple articulated storefronts down to the curb. A rendering overall showing you this, including a new replacement. There's a kind of, you know, just a standard wire gate here. This is actually a retail space that's rented for storage to the sellers of the houses of the building behind. So, we'd like to have a much nicer gate there that conforms to the storefronts. Another rendering showing you also, the plan is to do steel ramps for access. And these are totally reversible. Unluckily, we don't have to have railings under code, because they're very minor step ups, six inches, eight inches or so. And the plan eventually, there are vaults underneath the sidewalks. So, once we open up that kind of rooms, as we all know, it's a lot of work. But the plan eventually is to change the sidewalks, and at that point, slope the sidewalk enough so that we don't need these ramps anymore. So, we're just putting in metal ones that are easily removable. Again, you can see this brownstone element continuing around the corner. This, of you looking towards the northeast, again, showing this very simple frosted glass gate that we'd like to have replace the existing gate. That's the existing gate. Clearly, nonhistoric material. And this is the proposed condition here. Details in the signboard, again, conforming in color to the cornice at the top of the building. This is a detail showing you, there's a really nice brownstone detail in these storefronts that we, and, and most of them are covered by gypsum board. We, the plan is to remove the gypsum board and to install the storefronts butt up against the brownstone. And we can, there, if you can see the location of the holes for the original storefronts, we know exactly where it was, we would just put it back in exactly the same place and, leave in each store that, this kind of wonderful brownstone detail visible. We are also proposing to take this glass right down to the curb, which of course, in modern retail, is really what everybody wants. You're paying a lot of money per front foot on Columbus Avenue and, and on Madison Avenue and all these stores, and what you want to do is see the merchandise. This has been a pattern on several, many, many storefronts, commission approved along the avenues. You can see, here are some examples, which we want to, we want to continue that in, when the, when the, when we were active in supporting the designation of the district, one of the things we discussed with the commission was the idea that the, in these buildings, we would want to preserve the historic fabric of the building, but have a certain amount of freedom in the storefront systems themselves, which of course, were always fungible. They were wood, and they would be changed all the time, and die and be replaced. So, that's what we're hoping to do again, as this happened often. That's the more interesting part of the discussion. The storefronts also on West 82nd Street, without my, I've been involved with this building for years, and I have to admit, I didn't even notice that this had happened. There were very low railings, as you can see in this photograph, on the two stoops at 76 and 78. And evidently, one cold winter's night, somebody went tumbling over those railings and into the area way below. So, the owner, without consulting anybody, urgently had them replaced. And what they replaced them with were these kind of fanciful railings. You can see, we did determine with staff help that these, the original railings, which you could barely see, but they, they were evidently historic, and the condition of the stoop is historic. They were replaced with these kind of fanciful railings, which I have to say are not what I would have designed. But I also have to say that I didn't even really notice that they'd been replaced. They're bland enough, and inoffensive enough, that, that there they are, and, and I find them perfectly acceptable, frankly, but that's your call. That's our presentation.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Devonshire, please go ahead.
Thanks, Sarah. Mr. Gill, the, the brownstone on the ground floor, is it your intent to strip it and expose the original brownstone?
Wherever we can, yeah, we have, we have a very good contractor who I've worked with many, many times, very good at this. Wherever there's existing brown Wherever there's existing brownstone, we will strip it, maintain it, restore it, and then obviously add whatever material we need to, to match. All of this up in the signboard, obviously, has to be new. There's nothing there.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chapin, please go ahead.
Yes, on the courtyard, I can't describe it, it's a courtyard site. Yeah, is there a plaque there? There's reference to a plaque in some of the comments.
Are we talking about this location?
Yeah, I guess so.
No, there's nothing that I know of. That's the proposed condition.
That, that's the sign available, I guess, is that's a sign there.
Right, there would be some sort of simple graphics applied to this. It would be frosted glass, probably something very small. And we can discuss that.
So that's, that's not necessarily the size that's contemplated.
No, I would think it would be really something very minor at eye height. Perhaps, you know, again, all of the details of the signs, if they're actually designed tenant by tenant, have to be passed by staff for approval anyway. But I think it would be something, it would be very small.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson, please go ahead.
One question about the bulkhead. In this, in this photo, on the right-hand side, there is a, on the window, the storefront window, there's a simple kind of a bulkhead. And the question I have for you is, if the window coming down to grade, isn't that a modernist idea really? Not a visual idea, A. And B, if you, if you carry the bucket around, this building would have more character, don't you think? Or you like this kind of modernist? It's, it's very modern now, just brownstone. But it doesn't, the original, if you go back to the original photo that you have.
Yes, I understand what you're saying completely, and.
I mean, there's a character there that will be lost, you know? I mean.
It's true. And, and, and that's very much our intent. I mean, part of the, part of the point of this investment by the owner is to maximize, maximize value. And as I'm sure you're aware, I mean, I, my other, one of my many odd roles in life is as president of the Columbus Avenue Business Improvement District, and we're doing better than a lot of retail strips, but we're struggling. And these older storefronts, yes, they're quite quaint, but they aren't. They don't, they don't meet really any of the modern standards for retail display. So that's why we here, as we have in many other sites along the avenue, are treating the storefront systems themselves as modern, while preserving the material that we have, which is historic.
Thank you.
Sarah, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Holford-Smith, please go ahead.
Yes, I had a question about the ramps. I'm looking at page 20, I think, is an elevation that shows the proposed. And on the left-hand side, we have two storefronts. The ramp section meets, it forms one long continuous raised platform. And I'm wondering why you didn't just do individual ramps?
It's less fussy. Frankly, it's just one simple piece that runs all the way across. And again, we hope these are going to be replaced in a few years anyway. They're, they're, and we hope that they read as what they are, temporary, painted dark to make them go away as much as they can. You know, I hate having to deal with ramps at all, and handicapped accessible issues are always daunting in these buildings and retail spaces in general. So I'm looking forward to the day when the budget allows us to replace the sidewalk and do away with them altogether. But in the meantime, we're just trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Okay. And I know you're now doing railings. I'm just, are you concerned about a tripping hazard with those projecting platforms?
Well, you know, one, one always, what can you say? I mean, perhaps, but that's what the way ADA, you know, that's the way the training radius works, and that's what we have to have to make it work to, to conform to code. And again, that's another reason to press our clients to replace the sidewalk.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think we'll move to testimony. We may have more questions after that. So I will turn it over. I think our executive director, Lisa Car Savage, is going to be walking us through testimony today. Lisa? And if you are in the meeting and wish to speak, please raise your virtual hands. We can identify you, and we will start with anyone who signed up in advance. Thank you, and I apologize, I was muted. I just brought Community Board Seven into the meeting.
Thank you, this is Mark Gilliam. I'm a member of the Preservation Committee of Community Board Seven and a past chair of the board. And I'm here with thanks to our chairs, our community chairs, Michelle Parker and Kate Carpen, to present our resolution in support of this application, both aspects of it, the storefront infill replacement and the iron railings on the side street. We were particularly grateful for the proposal to unify the storefront. We try not to make decisions just based on the fact that what's proposed is better than what's there now, although it certainly is. We, the unifying of the storefront up and down the block is, is important to us. The fenestration is important, and we believe it is appropriate for a number of reasons. Of course, first and foremost, the restoration of that mini cornice above the sign band is worth, is worth the price of admission by itself, and the restoration of the, of the rusticated brownstone and the unification of that look and feel on the, on the avenue is appropriate and important to, to the, to the continued, both to the historical context and to the vitality of the Commercial Avenue. With respect to, we actually took note of the perhaps longer glass store going all the way down to the sidewalk and found that to be important for a number of reasons, some of which are in the bellywake of a community board more than the commission. It is appropriate in that it is very consistent with what is across the street and down the block. And so it unifies not just this one set of buildings, but it unifies the avenue. It's also important from a safety perspective, because the more transparent, one of the things that we try to do is to make sure that glass transparency, such so that folks walking on the street can see into the store and folks in the store can see out in the street, that's an important safety concern. We find it to be consistent with precedent throughout the area, as I said, and including matters that have been approved at staff level as those that have been before your commissioners. We also find it to be sensitive. It's in the spirit of restoration rather than enhancement. They're not targeting, turning up these sign, these storefronts to be more than they are. I thought it was important that they showed us the, how these store, these buildings began life under the elevated train, and how it was important to capture that spirit as well as its, and its heritage. And so it's, it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood as a whole. With respect to the railings, we find that, we found that they were also appropriate in that there are any number of iron railings, both before and after designation, that are exactly like this throughout the neighborhoods. And so it would be exalting form over substance to, to take issue with how we might have done it differently. The standard we employ is would we have approved these if they came before us with or with, if the permit process had been followed? And we concluded that we would have, even if there, even if we were on a blank slate, we might have done something slightly differently. So overall, our board voted 36 to 0 with one abstention to approve, and we therefore urge you to approve this design and application. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mark Bench.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Morning, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. Please sit your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Absolutely. Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners, this is Mark Bench for and behalf of the VSA Metropolitan Chapter. The Victorian Society opposes the, this proposal for legalization of the removal of historic stoop ironwork and replacement with new ironwork. The historic ironwork was significant fabric and should be replaced to match. The new ironwork is badly proportioned and may be taller than required, though it appears to be of high-quality manufacture and loosely based on the design of the original. A better solution would be to add a simple horizontal bar above the original ironwork. Regarding the storefronts, we suggest that the applicant look more closely at the historic photos to discern details of the early storefronts. There appears to be a wood storefront cornice visible. A design that takes off from these fragments will be less generic and a better fit for this building. The storefronts should also, should include bulkheads, and because they face west, simple roll-up awnings should be incorporated. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Simeon Bankhoff. And Simeon, you just need to unmute yourself? Okay, Simeon, I'm gonna, oh, there you go.
Hey there, Lisa. Can you hear me?
Hi. Yeah, we can hear you. Do you need a minute?
Yeah, I need a minute. I'm having, I'm having computer difficulties, so give me a second.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna leave you here, but I'm gonna mute you, and I'll bring in the next person. Okay, I'm gonna bring in Sean Corzandy. Okay, Sean, you're in the meeting now? There you go. Sean?
Sean, you are muted, we can't hear you.
Sean's not muted, though. But we can't hear him.
Now?
Yes, now we can.
All right, my apologies. Good, good, good morning, Commissioner. Sean Corzandy for Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee often has a vocal participant in today's applicant. Mr. Gill was helpful in our initial review and provided clarifications, and even made detailed changes which our committee is supportive of. For number 76 and 78, we find these decade-old modifications safety-based and benign enough interventions to legalize. While we don't support work without permits, we feel these changes bring the rails better into modern code compliance and reflect the language of the original materials and deserve an exception. For number 80, we support barrier-free access to our landmarks so they may be enjoyed by all and look forward to the eventual realization of this handsome storefront master plan at the building formerly known as the Nebraska. For years, it outliered what is becoming an increasingly restored commercial corridor. These alterations will help continue to draw visitors to the Upper West Side while restoring dignity to these prominent landmarks. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee is in support of all aspects of this application as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Simeon.
Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You're ready to go.
Good, good enough. Simeon Bankhoff, Historic Districts Council, ACSE's the advocate for American Cities Designated Historic Districts and Neighborhoods, Murder and Preservation. Our Public Review Committee monitors proposed changes within historic districts and changes to individual landmarks, and has reviewed the application now before LPC. With regard to the legalization, as always, we would ask whether or not this would be the standard to which the commission would approve. We do not feel just so, and we would ask that the original or something akin to the original be restored, perhaps with a little bit of an addition to deal with the safety concerns. And then with regards to the storefront master plan, a storefront master plan in this location is a terrific idea, but we find that the details, we ask that the details be refined prior to its implementation. As proposed, the storefronts appear too flat for this historic district and the Columbus Avenue retail corridor. We suggest incorporating prototypical storefront elements like recessed entries and bulkheads, as well as taking another look at the historic implementation of this row of stores as an inspiration. However, we do feel this is a improvement. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Simeon. We, we lost you a little bit at the end there, but I think we heard the full extension of your testimony. And I don't see any other hands raised. Okay, thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
No other additional written comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Mr. Hill, would you like to respond to some of the comments? I know the community board and Landmarks West, the neighborhood groups were very supportive, but there were some other comments in respected details and, and the ironwork in the bulkhead. So would you like to respond to those?
Sure, I mean, the alternative to the ironwork would be, which I, you know, it's a practical solution, it's one that's often done, but I kind of hate it because it is not to code, and it's not only, sometimes things that are not to code, you kind of say, oh, well, so it's not to code, big deal. In this case, it's pretty, it was literally, I think, these original railings were some 12, 14, 16 inches high, so over an area way that goes down a full floor. So clearly, being to code is important in this instance, and the alternative would be to put a metal railing in and leave the old one, but you'd have to do something. To me, the ad hoc solution that the owner came up with is preferable. That's a judgment call. As far as the idea that we should go back to wooden storefronts and inset doors, that's really just not, it's not, it's my, not my philosophy of retail personally, and it's not one that makes any economic sense in this instance, and it's not the pattern on Columbus Avenue. If that were the case, I don't think this owner would go ahead with this work. Part of the point is, is enhancing the retail value of the space and tying it into the rest of the avenue.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any final questions? Okay, so I am unmuting or requesting to unmute all of you right now so that we can make a motion to close the hearing and begin our discussion. So Commissioner Holford-Smith, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'm moved.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is, the hearing is closed, and we'll begin our discussion. And we have three applications before us. Two are for ironwork at the stoop. They're identical, but just two different buildings within the grouping. And the third application is for the storefront master plan, signage and ramps, including the new door to the alleyway. And so as we do our comments, just to sort of provide some structure for them, I'd like to start with, you know, start with the ironwork and then move to the storefront master plan ramps and signage and the door to the alleyway. And I think, you know, as we've, we heard, there was a lot of support from, in the testimony. There were also comments regarding details and materials in the storefronts. And I do want to just sort of emphasize the commission's history on Columbus Avenue, which, the first decades after, I think multiple decades actually after designation, the commission operated under guidelines very similar to the Madison Avenue rules, which allowed great flexibility where no historic fabric was being replaced. And, and those guidelines recognize the changing and evolving nature of the commercial character of this thoroughfare. As a result of those, it's really actually now 30 years, I think, of those guidelines, there is great variety on this commercial thoroughfare, and that is what the applicant is pointing to in terms of the storefront design. Having said that, there are a lot of restorative steps in this. Having said that, there are a lot of restorative steps in this approach. It's really a question of the final details. So just to sort of give you some context on our regulatory history that might give you a sense of this particular stretch of Columbus Avenue. And so why don't we start? Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one?
Sure. So in terms of the, no, I just want to preface this by saying that it's always disappointing when these projects come before us to legalize things that I think, in this instance, the applicant knows better. That said, in terms of the ironwork, I think it's fine. It is fairly innocuous and seems to blend in with what's around it. There is a minor detail in here I just wanted to point out is that there's some little medallions in the center that are silver. And I would like to recommend that they be painted black so that they blend in better with what else is there. In terms of the storefront, I think the applicant has done a very good job here. And if we could just move to the page that shows the storefronts. Yeah, I think the applicant has done a very good job here with the base of the building. I like, you know, I like what's been done in terms of the brownstone. Look and feel the cornice at the top. I think the signage is very consistent. The glass going down to street level seems to make sense to me, as does the access ramp, which is which is minimal. I would like to go back to that signage at the side, at the side, on the right side of the storefronts and say that, I don't know what it is going to be. I'm assuming it's to promote available retail space. And I would just like the applicant to work with staff to ensure that it's a little more understated and makes sense and fits in contextually. I also, as a final wrap-up, just wanted to say that I think in general, this is a, goes a long way to I just been cleaning up the look and feel of Columbus Avenue a little bit. I think it's, it works well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Since it's historic fabric, I can accept the storefronts. I think they're fine. I can accept the temporary handicap lifts and ramps. I cannot accept the handrail because I feel that if this was put in without the consent of LPC, and if I have to go to another project that has put in something without the consent of LPC, and this one, we approved this one, and that one, we say no. I think this should be taken to the staff, looked again, and the staff should make a decision, and it should be of not approving the handrail.
Okay, but, you know, what we usually do is regardless of whether it's a violation or not, we look at whether or not the the height, style, material is consistent with the typology, building typology. So even if we were to find this appropriate, that would be okay. We may find that something similar appropriate on a similar building, and that would be consistent.
Okay, let me put it another way. If the height, if the height is correct, what, 42 inches or whatever it is, if it's not higher than that, if it meets code exactly, I can approve. If it doesn't...
Okay. Under, okay, if taller than 42 inches. Okay, great. Commissioner Gustafson?
Okay, I'll start with the rail. I'll take Commissioner Jefferson's position one step further. The issue is always whether we would have approved this in the first instance, and I wouldn't have. I appreciate that you need to get to the right height and make it safe, et cetera. And I would note that, you know, in emergencies, we do have procedures to act quickly if they felt that was necessary. But the standard is whether we would have approved this in the first instance, and so I'm not going to redesign it for them, but there are other ways to do it. Number two, on the storefronts, the I understand we're not taking out any original material. I think that you're not going to lose much by retaining some level of bulkheads in the, in those, in the storefronts. The, so I would, I would ask that they bring something back there. The majority of the storefronts on Columbus Avenue do have bulkheads, so it is more of a Madison Avenue look. And on the alley there, while I would never ask them to go back to the grungy 70s look of an alley on the Upper West Side, I also do not think that the glitzy look is the way to go. Somewhere between those two things is an inexpensive approach that would be, that would not call attention to itself and would get the job done for them even in terms of the signage.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm finding that I can approve both as presented, and I'm especially, I think, convinced by Community Board Seven's the points that were made and the extent to which they support this project.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holford-Smith?
You're muted.
Sorry about that. I think that I can vote to approve the railings as installed. They do recall the historic. And the storefronts, I think, are appropriate. I understand their desire to have the glass go down to the, down to the grade, and I think it's okay in this situation. I'm okay with the temporary ramps. I do think that the frosted glass door to the alleyway is very anomalous, and I think that they should rethink that. I'm not sure what that should be, but probably not frosted glass.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
So on the ironwork, as far as I can see, Commissioner Holford-Smith just said that the, that there was, it was, you know, it looked like a historic. It seems to me very ornate and not, not typical. You know, I didn't see in the photograph that this is something. I don't know, is there any evidence that there was something like this before?
Well, there was a historic photograph, right, that showed decorative ironwork. Cory, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. It's hard to see in the historic photographs, but the photo taken from roughly 2009 before this work happened does show it well enough. And it was, you know, about half the height of the one that's there now, but it did have two sort of round elements within it and some other curly curves.
That's what I was referring to, that photograph.
That's what I'm looking for, yeah. No, no, I I was more concerned about whether it was reasonably appropriate as far as the ornate quality of it and if it was calling under attention to itself, and the height, which, you know, does look sort of out of proportion, I agree, but the answer is that there was something there that was fair, somewhat ornate at least, but not as high. But they, but they feel that they need this for, for, to keep...
They had an accident where somebody fell over, so they needed to raise it to meet code, which is 42 inches, and we'll have to confirm that it's no higher.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I will actually go along with that, though I had some concerns about it based on this conversation we've just had. As far as the storefront design, I think in general, it's excellent. I had two different, well, maybe three different concerns, but one is that the I do think some kind of bulkhead would be preferable. And it doesn't have to be a high bulkhead that would create a sense of, you know, that any security issues or something, just something to kind of reference the sense that there would normally been a bulkhead. And it could even be something in, you know, metal or something which was not, you know, not ornate or anything, very simple to go along with the thing. So I'd like to see some kind of bulkhead there, but it definitely could be worked on with the staff and would not have to be very high. I also wondered about, there's, in the middle of that ramp, there's a kind of platform, and if we could eliminate that and just have the ramp. Yeah, I think that looks very intrusive and kind of calls attention to itself, whereas, you know, I think the ramp's okay. One, one question I had, they kept referring to it as a temporary solution, which I appreciate. This is going to be a master plan. Could our approval refer to it as temporary? And what would that mean? Would that mean that it was, could only be there for X amount of time that the staff could approve it? What?
Right, if we were to refer to it as temporary, we would have to have a date for its removal. And you all would have to, if it's more than a year, you would have to opine on what that appropriate timeframe is.
By the way, five or 10 years or whatever it was, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so where are we at? I don't, I don't know if I have any other, let's see, I had the, I think my main, my main issue was that maybe there should be some kind of bulkhead included, and that side signage, they said that they did not intend to have it that large. Would that be approved by staff in the future, or?
I think that's what they were asking for, that some, that the commission approves some guideline for the signage, for the size, and then that would be executed with the staff.
Okay, I think the signage should be somewhat smaller. It should be smaller than it is on the side. But those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
All right, I think that the wrought iron actually is fine. I have no objection to that. I think it's appropriate. I think they should, they should come back. I think that the restoration of the brownstone to brownstone color and stripping is very good, and the staff should, of course, monitor that process carefully. I agree with Ann about the frosted glass for the, for the areaway door. That's not typical. It can be wrought iron. It can be sheet, sheet metal, expanded metal. There's all kinds of things that are typically used, but they can work with staff on that. And I think the ramp is fine. I think the text on the, on the Columbus Avenue side of the, of the areaway access is way too big and should be scaled down as part of the master plan. Shouldn't be left that big if that's not their intention. I think the most, you know, I think certainly the extension of the molding, the rebuilding of the molding across the storefront and creating it as a brownstone face is wonderful. The issue of the storefronts for me has to do with the choices made. When we've done storefronts in the recent past, last 10 years, my recollection is that, at the commission level anyway, that on Columbus Avenue, the storefronts that went all the way down to the ground were generally butt jointed. They did not have aluminum standards storefront tubing. And that created a much more heightened contrast between the antiquity of the building and the modernity of the insert. This, using a standard storefront material, I don't think achieves that effect. I think it just looks like an inexpensive retrofit. So I would, I could accept the full glass, if it were, of the frameless variety. But, and I could also accept a version similar to what other commissioners have said with some kind of modest bulkhead. But I think that the use of the standard aluminum sections gives it a overly generic quality that we generally would not approve at staff level item.
Okay, Commissioner Devonshire?
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, I'm okay with the with the wrought iron. I agree with Gene that there doesn't need to be any silver involved in that. It should all look like wrought iron. I'm, I'm fine with the ADA improvements. I agree with my colleagues that there should be some sort of bulkhead on the storefronts, even if it's only a foot. I think that's a much more compatible design. I also agree with them that the frosted glass at the, at the alleyway is, is not appropriate.
Okay. And might you be also comfortable, as Commissioner Goldblum was with the staff, rethinking the materiality of that?
Absolutely.
Okay. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the comments. I agree with the community board. I think the safety comes first, so for me, the handrails are acceptable. I agree with Commissioner Addy and the comment about the ramp. I think the ramp should, as a very minimal, add a reflector. I think that's a very dangerous. Normally, the code would not allow such a minimal rise of only one step, so that is a, something I would add. I agree with the comment about if bulkhead can be added at the base, that's helpful. And also, the frosted glass seems kind of odd at the end, so those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. And I just, I missed your comment about the ramp, if you can restate that, sorry.
I just think at the edge of the ramp, there should be a reflector. I think it's very dangerous whenever you have a one-step riser, especially in the dark winter time or snow covers sidewalks. It's very easy to trip up, and we don't want anybody to get hurt.
Okay. All right, and Commissioner Bland?
The wrap-up. Okay, I'm fine with the ironwork, but no silver. I'm persuaded now, listening to Commissioners before me speaking, that there should either be a bulkhead, as Michael Goldblum has said, or or butt-jointed glass, one or the other. And I guess the bulkhead seems to be winning out, so I guess I could go with that. And I, I do also agree with everybody else saying that the frosted glass is an inappropriate way of expressing that, but working with staff, they could probably fix that.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so I think, you know, we've had a lot of really great, helpful and specific comments. And I think that we have a majority of people who would support an application with the continued work with the staff to paint the ironwork black, to rethink the materiality of the door to the alley and not use frosted glass, and to reduce the signage on that frosted glass, and to add a low bulkhead to, or a bulkhead to the storefronts. And, and I think with some also consideration of the extent of the black metal on the sidewalk. So I think we might get to six with those conditions. I'm going to try to do that. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you do the first two motions on the ironwork, and then I'll do the storefront one and try to capture these comments?
Okay. I'm not really understanding why there were two on that, but anyway. So in the matter of docket, LPC 20-078376 West 82nd Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, Renaissance Romanesque Revival style flats building, designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1889 to 91. The application is to legalize the replacement of ironwork at the stoop without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I know that the building's style scale, materials, and
I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications finding that the ironwork, while likely historic, was not highly unique or intricately designed, that the new ironwork recalls a design of the historic ironwork. That the increased height of the new ironwork creates a safer condition at the stoop and that the work does not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. However, I find that the silver finish of portions of the ironwork calls undue attention to itself. Therefore, recommend that the ironwork be painted a uniform black throughout.
All right. Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, and we'll take the vote, see if we get to our six. Rich?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Jeanne, will you do the second one?
Yeah, but I do have a question. Because the copy that I have reads exactly like the copy I just read.
Right. So what's different is the docket number and the address is a different number. But you can skip some of the, maybe the description and the noting portion and just sort of read the docket number and the address and go right to the findings.
In the matter of docket, 20-078397 D8 West 82nd Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A Renaissance Romanesque Revival Style Flats Building, designed by Tom and Wilson, built in 1889 to 91. The application is to legalize replacement of ironwork at the stoop without Landmark's Preservation Commission permits. I recommend approval with modifications finding that the ironwork, while likely historic, was not highly unique or intricately designed, that the new ironwork recalls a design of the historic ironwork. That the increased height of the new ironwork creates a safer condition at the stoop and that the work does not detract from the special architectural historic character of the streetscape or the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend that the ironwork be painted a uniform black throughout.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Rich, will you call the vote?
Sorry, I froze for a second. Was it seconded? Okay. Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with nine in favor and two opposed, that motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And I will do the last motion. In the matter of docket number LPC 20-0784080 West 82nd Street in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, a Renaissance Romanesque Revival Style Flats Building with storefronts at the ground floor, designed by Tom and Wilson and built in 1890 to 91. This is an application to establish a master plan governing the replacement of storefront infill signage and the installation of barrier-free access ramps. And I recommend approval with modifications finding that the replacement of the modern storefront infill will not eliminate any significant historic fabric or features. That the streetscape has historically featured a variety of storefronts of different periods and styles and therefore, the new storefront design will be in keeping with the eclectic commercial character of the streetscape. That the materials, finishes and simple profiles of the proposed black finished metal storefront infill will harmonize with the materials and finishes of other storefronts and will fit neatly between the prominent piers at the building's base. That the installation of the brownstone tinted stucco cornice and sign band will help this portion of the building harmonize with its neighbors and create an appropriate space for signage. That the proposed ramps will provide barrier-free access to the commercial spaces at the building in a non-intrusive manner. That the simple design of the metal ramps will help them to remain a discreet present. And that the establishment of a master plan will ensure a more unified appearance at the building's base and as the infill is replaced over time. However, I recommend that the applicant work in consultation with the staff to re-study and the materiality and design of the gate to the alleyway and to reduce the size of the sign on that gate and/or door and to add a minimal bulkhead with compatible details to the storefronts to, and to look at the extent of the metal associated with the ramps and to identify areas that can be reduced in that ramp and to also add a reflector to think about safety. Okay, and so Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, let's call the vote and see where we end up.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with eleven in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you. If that's approved, please continue to work with staff on these outstanding items.
Okay, thanks. And Commissioners, I'd like to note that the next two items are separate applications, but both involve work at stoops and/or areaways, and they are located on the same block in the Central Ridgewood Historic District in Queens. The first item has been heard before, so the staff will reintroduce this one and will walk you through a survey of existing conditions found in the historic district that you all requested. The second item was previously read into the record but not yet presented. And with that, I'll read in the first of these items. It is public meeting item number five, LPC 19-09157, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Queens, block 3532, lot 35, 60-83, 68th Avenue in the Central Ridgewood Historic District, a Renaissance Revival Style House built in 1909. The application is to legalize reconstructing the front stoop without LPC permits. And again, this was last presented at the public hearing of July 18th, 2017. No action was taken at that time. And it did appear again on an agenda in December 15th of 2020, but it was removed and not presented. So the staff will be making this presentation in just a moment.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners, Katie Rice, Landmark Staff. Can you guys hear me?
No, we have a bit of feedback. I don't know. Do you have two devices on? Maybe just make sure one is muted.
I don't have the second one on. Is it still echoing?
It's still echoing.
I think it might have been Cory muted yourself and then it was fine. Katie, want to?
Okay, does this sound okay now?
Yeah, that works better.
Okay, okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners, Katie Rice, Landmark Staff. 6083 68th Avenue is... Let me see if I can advance.
You just need to click and then use the arrow keys or mouse.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. 6083 68th Avenue is on the north side of 68th Avenue between 60th Lane and Fresh Pond Road. This application was first heard back in 2017. The Commissioners took no action and requested that the staff surveyed the district for more details about the existing stoop conditions. The proposal is to legalize alterations to the stoop, including the removal of the stone cheek walls, as you can see in this photograph, the re-cladding of the brownstone stoop and steps and installation of railings. So they showed photographs of deterioration, but this is the after condition. So, you know, just to go back through, they showed the level of deterioration as well as, you know, the comparison between the historic stoop and the current stoop. And this is the current condition. So then they showed, you know, they showed before and after photographs as well as examples of other stoops on the block. And most of these examples are actually in violation as well as, these are on a block that is not the same block and different building type. Okay, so I'm going to now begin the survey that I did.
Katie, do you want to just, I think Cory already did it, but just to summarize what the comments were when we presented that last time?
Yeah. Oh, so they wanted, the Commissioners wanted us to, the staff, to do a survey of the historic district of the existing stoop conditions. There was a concern about maybe there was a structural issue. And so we wanted to have an idea of how many stoops have been altered in the district. So my survey looked at the stoops in the historic district, which I'm about to show you.
Right. So I think that the Commissioners, as I recall, you were somewhat persuaded that perhaps there was an inherent structural condition, concern with the stoops that resulted in failure that would cause one to replace it. And then the question of how it's done was a sort of a second question. But to sort of understand whether this was true or not, we wanted a survey to see if others had similar structural concerns and that there had been widespread replacement. And then what that looked like to help inform our determinations of appropriateness in terms of materiality and style. So Katie did the survey and she's going to present it now. And then this survey will inform the discussion for this public meeting item, which is coming back to us, as well as the next public hearing item.
So as you can see, the Central Ridgewood Historic District is very large. It was, it's 990 buildings. They're primarily brick row houses. Although everything is cohesive overall, there are a few recurring variations in the rowhouse type. So this particular rowhouse type we are reviewing is designed with a brick facade, curved bay, brownstone stoop and cheek walls. And it's a very common stoop type in the, or common building type in the district with over, you know, 200 buildings of the similar type. At the time of designation, many of the stoops were coated or painted. Here's some streetscape photographs. A few had additional alter interventions, including being rebuilt, adding new brick or stone treads and replacing cheek walls and railings. Some blocks are more intact than others. So this is an example of the treads. This is the example of a total replacement of the stoop and ironwork. So this survey shows a review of the particular rowhouse type, noting the alterations to the stoops. The area surveyed is noted with hash marks on the map. I know that's kind of hard to see. The alterations are noted with different colors, pink for removal of masonry cheek walls and installation of railings, light purple for re-cladding the treads and dark purple for an entirely new stoop, which could include re-cladding, replacement of the treads or replacement or removal of the cheek walls. Tread re-cladding is the most common alteration. 6083 68th Avenue is shown here on the north side of 68th Avenue between 60th Lane and Fresh Pond Road. There are 40 rowhouses on this block. 10 have altered stoops and six of them were altered after designation and are in violation. The properties in violation are marked with an X on this map. Compared to some other blocks, this block is largely intact with few stoop alterations that occurred prior to designation. I will be presenting 6053 68th Avenue, as indicated on this map, immediately following this item. That includes the summary of my survey. Let me know if you have any questions. And the owner would like to make a statement.
Okay. All right, thank you. And we'll have to open up the, have a motion to open up the proceedings. This is a public meeting item. I'm requesting to unmute you all, so look for that request. And Commissioner Goldblum, we'll get to your question in a minute. I just want to go through the motions of opening the proceedings. So Commissioner Lutti, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we're now open, we've now opened the proceedings. So the applicant may make a statement and can also answer questions. So why don't we actually start with the applicant making her statement and then Commissioner Goldblum will go ahead with your question and see if we have others after that.
Sarah, we may have had a misunderstanding with owners for the two applications. I believe we have the owner for the next application, but not this one. Do not join the meeting as of this time. So we'll keep an eye out for him or her, but not here at this one.
Okay, all right. So Commissioner Goldblum, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Katie a question. Can you put some numbers to the graphics? What percentage have been modified?
Also, if we're looking specifically at the buildings surveyed, so I know this is a bit confusing. I chose to survey buildings with the brownstone cheek walls as well as buildings with, and the like brownstone stoop. Some of them have railings in this district, so I chose to only focus on those. And so that's the hash mark area. And I did a count of those and it's 336. That's, you know, roughly. But the buildings with the higher stoops, these are the lower stoops we're looking at. You know, it's maybe about half those, so, you know, around 150, around 200. So that are the lower type stoop. They have similar issues, it seems, in terms of, you know, with the re-cladding and different situations. So this would be, that would be like a third of the district.
And of that third, of that third, it looks like maybe about 20% of it has been modified in some way? Has a color?
I think that's a good guess, yes. I mean, I didn't do the tabulations and apologize.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay. And Cory, I don't know if we've been able to locate the owner on this one. Okay. In the meantime, Rich, have we received any additional comments on this? This is the public meeting item.
No, we haven't received any additional comments.
Okay. All right. So I think what we should do is go ahead and have our discussion on this one. And if the owner is unable to get into the meeting, we may want to just defer the vote until the owner has an opportunity to make a statement. But let's go ahead and have the discussion for now and see where we land on it. Okay, so Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start this one? Oh, you're muted.
Sure. I feel that this district is characterized more than most by its remarkable uniformity. So I would, I would feel that this modification would not be something that I would feel comfortable viewing as appropriate. I think that the cheek walls should be solid and to, you know, to the greatest extent, emulating what was there historically. You know, since it's a relatively new district, my guess is that most of those that had colors identified on, on the survey were pre, pre, pre-landmarking modifications. And I think that one of the best things we can do for this district is to try to enhance its, its innate qualities of uniformity.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Devonshire, I think last time you had a lot of thoughts about the sort of, the structural concerns with respect to the original construction. And so I don't know if you recall that at all, but based on the material that Katie has presented today, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are that I don't even remember what I had for lunch yesterday. However, I, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum on this. I don't think this is appropriate at all.
Okay, and Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I, I agree with the commissioners. I think the, at least the wall should be retained.
Okay, and Commissioner Bland?
I would agree as well.
Commissioner Luttrell?
I would agree as well. And I, I also just want to say that I don't think that the walls should be painted. They should be, you know, if they're brown, they should be the color of the stone, which I'm assuming will be, you know, of the brownstone varieties.
And Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson?
Yep, I agree. The application should be denied.
And Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I think the cheek walls are very important, but the rises and the treads could be more varied. So I don't know if there's some, if there's something that can be done, you know, short of the denial, if there's some modification, but.
Okay. All right, well, I, that's, you know, I appreciate the sort of thinking about it in parts. Okay, and Commissioner Horford Smith?
Sorry, I agree that the renovation is not appropriate. And I think that perhaps one of the issues with the cheek walls, I've seen a lot of the photographs, in a lot of the photographs, they've been painted, as Jeannie pointed out. And also, there were originally like weak openings at the end of every tread that would allow water, snow to escape. And a lot of those have been filled in. And I think that, the painting and the filling in of those, those openings have contributed to the deterioration. So maybe we could, if you could help, you know, educate the homeowners, that, that's an important feature.
Yeah, not only decorative, but yeah, functional as well. And right, contributing to the problems. Okay, and Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree with what previous commissioners have said. This district, there was a, an enormous amount of community advocacy to create this district. And I think that this is a very important part of its character that we should be preserving. So I, I support what other commissioners said.
Okay, all right, great. So I think that we're all in agreement that the proposed, the work as, as proposed, the request to legalize, is not appropriate. And, you know, the owner is not here. And I do think that while I, we're moving to a vote to deny it, I think we should give her the opportunity to make a statement. So I think we'll take no action. If we can find her later, we can bring it back to let her make the statement and then see if that affects any of our thinking. And then otherwise, move to do the vote after, at that point. But I do want to also note that while there was a lot of advocacy for these districts in Ridgewood, we have also, in our experience, found that there is a significant amount of, a significant, there are a significant amount of property owners who really don't understand the process at all and may not have been included in, or aware of the advocacy, let's say. And so we have been expanding our research in this neighborhood in particular. We've been doing it citywide, trying to do a lot of outreach efforts, not only in areas that are undesignated to garner support for designation and raise awareness for preservation, but also in areas that are already designated to remind owners of the responsibilities so that we can avoid violations. This is an area where we have seen a, a lot of work in violation. Most of it has been because people are unaware and it's been inadvertent. And so it's something we've been tackling. And so I just wanted you all to know that we have really expanded our outreach to this, these districts in Ridgewood and will continue to do so so that we can continue to educate people and hopefully turn this wave of work happening without permits around. Okay, so we'll.
My last question? Do we ever get involved in proactive kind of sourcing for people?
In terms of contractors? And so as a city agency, we can't officially make recommendations. But of course, we do talk to property owners all the time. And we do, we are able to give them a list of names of people who have done work and done work with us. So in a way, we have a way to guide people without it being an official referral.
Since these are so darn regular, there might, I'm sure that, that not too far from this location, there would be precast contractors who could knock these suckers out like, you know, like, like Oreos. It would be very worthwhile, I think, for maybe someone who's a specialist on the staff with a, along with a community person, to try to identify a couple of people. And, and, you know, it looks like Katie has spent much more time than anybody should looking at these stoops. She might want to try to help source. This is a natural for precast.
Yeah, yeah. And we have had meetings specifically on stoops, but I think we can continue, particularly now that we're taking actions. We can really, you know, tell the property owners what it means, what the result will be. And we can guide them towards perhaps a, a solution where they all stand together and, and maybe that is more efficient and cost effective as well.
Sarah, just, just to interrupt briefly, there is a phone number on the attendees list with a hand raise. And it, it's not the number we had down, but it may in fact be the owner, if we want to check on that to take care of business now. If that's something you'd like to do. It's, the number is, the number is 838-365-47359. I'm going to promote to panelist and we'll see how it goes.
Corey, you can just hit allow to talk. Okay. Yep, okay, so I think. So hello, we, we, we have promoted you to a panelist, which allows you to speak. If you can unmute yourself, I've just, if it's a phone number, there you go, you got it. Please state your name and speak.
Oh, I'm, I'm so glad. Thank you so much. Hello, commissioners, Alina Briss, 683 68th Avenue. I heard your discussion. You're absolutely right, but, there is a but. At that time, when I was doing the stoop renovation, I did not have any idea that Ridgewood is in a landmark area. My main focus was just to do the good job, not to get the water to the house and mudge the bricks, just to have the nice appearance of the house. Secondly, before I started my project, February 2015, I went to the building department to obtain a work permit. Went to inspector's desk with the bunch of pictures, or, you know, with the damaged stoop. And one of the inspectors advised me, I don't need any permit. This is just routine maintenance. So he said, just you cannot touch, the bottom of the stoop must stay original and the railings not higher than four feet. The third situation, for a few years, my correspondence address was incorrect. January 2014, I sold a home in Mignola, which was my primary residence, and mail correspondence address. After I sold it, I changed my address to Ridgewood. I believe that was March or April. And when the June came, I did not receive the property tax bill. I called 311. The representative said, because you have incorrect address. So he made the change in the system, not in the system, changed the address and sent a bill. 2015, the same situation. I did not receive the property tax. I called the 311. Representative said, oh, you have a wrong address. So he put the note in the system, changed the address and sent a bill. But this time, I asked for the confirmation in the email, because how many times I can change addresses? How many years? 2016, the same situation. My address was still not changed. My address was changed, was not changed until my hearing in the old office. Even when the lady was printing dismissal letter with the fine, which one I did receive, was old address. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't know what have I done wrong? I went to the building department. I was not informed. I didn't have any clue that Ridgewood is in a landmark area. So what have I done wrong? What I supposed to do differently at this moment when I was doing the stoop renovation?
Okay, thank you very much for your comments and explaining how you got to where we are. And, you know, as I said, this is not uncommon. We have found that there is a lack of awareness among many property owners. And we are trying to address that. I think it's something that we want to address to ensure that all property owners understand what they're supposed to do and have that information. And we've been doing that through meetings as well as flyers and will continue to do so. Unfortunately, the situation is that the commission has to make a determination based on how the stoop relates to the historic character of the building. And so we can't factor in issues of DOB problems and/or other problems with other procedures that certainly exacerbated the problem and led to great confusion. So while we are very sorry about that and, and wouldn't want to see that happen again, I think ultimately, we do have to make the determination based on the architecture.
May I say something?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But I think in this situation, I was completely unaware. If we would have this discussion before the stoop renovation, like 2014, 15, if I would know it, we wouldn't have completely the issue. The stoop would remain in the original condition. But if I didn't know it, I just follow, you know, just to maintain the house. I had so many problems with the water issue to the house. That's why I did it. Otherwise, I would, because I like, you know, historical.
I know.
In this case, how could I know it?
Yeah, well, right, because there were problems with your address, I guess, and getting notices and deed changes. It's a very unfortunate situation. And I think that we sympathize. Ultimately, under the law, we have to make a determination based on the architecture. But I think we can work with you on a, an extended time period to allow you to address it so that you don't have to address it immediately, understanding that you made the best efforts to take care of your property. And we recognize that it's important that homeowners do take care of their properties. And so, you know, it's, it's always unfortunate and very heartbreaking when people have spent money to invest and maintain their properties. And it has been done without the benefit of our guidance. And we have to make these tough decisions. But we'll talk to you after the meeting today. And we will work out an extended timeframe during which we, extended time period for you to come into compliance that can work well with your own abilities to address it. Okay, so we'll try to collaborate as closely as we can on that front.
I don't know what to say. I don't know if I, I'm going to have the money for it. I don't even have a tenant. They moved out, the house is empty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The other thing, we can also, in addition to looking at an extended timeframe that would allow you to sort of economically address this, essentially address this, we can also talk to you about our modest grant program and other funding programs that are available to properties and owners of landmarked properties that may also be able to provide some assistance. So I think what we'll do is after the meeting today, we'll set up a discussion with you and Katie Rice and some of our other senior team and legal staffs that can help guide you through the, and work with you on a timeframe and also guide you to some financial opportunities, you know, some grants and loan opportunities.
I understand, but anyway, I still, I don't understand it because I think this is not my fault if I would know it. But society could not, could be able not to change the address for a few years, that was okay. If I did the renovation, it's really not okay. So kind of me, I don't understand it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well.
Sarah, we can, we can meet with her afterwards.
Yeah, yeah. Well, our team, we'll have our expert team work with you and we'll come up with a solution that can work for you. So for now, unfortunately, we will have to do, take a vote and act on this application and understanding that you'll continue to work with the staff and get guidance from the staff on how to address it. So Commissioner Gustafson, would you make this motion?
Sorry, I didn't know that we were making a, a motion. I thought that we might come back if we were affected in any way by the testimony.
Sure.
And I am, and I am. Because I think that when there are bureaucratic screw-ups, we can't just kind of follow orders. You know, we can't, I, I don't feel comfortable with that. I feel like we're a municipal organization and, and, and the, the owner was involved in something that sounds like, you know, in, in some part, no fault of her own and a, and an extended trial. And I, I think that an exception can be made. I agree with you, Chair Carroll, that, that, you know, we have to opine on the architecture. But in this case, I'd like to make an exception and approve the work that's been done, given the circumstances related to this kind of, the more bureaucratic issues around whether or not she ever got notification.
All right. So do other, how do others feel? Raise your hand to let me know if you have similar thoughts.
And, and I would just say, commissioners, that one of the things that we've done in situations where, you know, a homeowner's really sort of inadvertently violated the law is, is, you know, we do allow these extended compliance times to sort of address that. And, and she can work with staff to come up with a, you know, a generous time to address this violation. So that's, that's something we've done in the past. You know, I, I think obviously, you know, for us to look at all the, the statements that have been made require, you know, extensive investigation and, and, you know, it, it's not something we typically delve into in great detail in our, in our decision-making.
Sorry, thank you, Mark. And Commissioner Chapin, I know you have your hand raised and I just want to give you an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I, I do, you know, I, I, I do think it needs to be denied just based on the architect issues and so forth. I also think we should try to help the applicant, as you have stated, both with the timeframe and if there's some way we can offer financial help. I know that we have, I guess, a small grants program. I know also that the New York Landmarks Conservancy does provide some financial assistance to various groups. I was wondering if we might talk to them about, like, a program to maybe help several stoop owners together willing to do it to, you know, correct their violations.
Yeah.
Just a thought, you know?
Yes, and I, it's a good thought And it's something we've done in the past where there've been sort of repetitive building types with the same type of violations. As we tried to work with the group as a whole along the lines of Commissioner Goldblum's suggestion. Because working with, as a group, you may find that the relationship and the work performed by a single contractor can be more effective, cost effective and more efficient. So we can definitely try to work with them as a group. Because as Katie pointed out, there are many other violations that are going to be coming before us for the same work.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Okay, all right. So Commissioners and Rebaron, I completely appreciate your thoughts and really sort of personally share those feelings. So, but I think for the rest of the commissioners, they're prepared to make a motion to deny. And we will make our best efforts to help this property owner, as well as the others in the district who are facing the same problem. All right, Commissioner Gustafson?
In the matter of LPC 1909157, 6083, 68th Avenue in the Central Ridgewood Historic District, the application is to legalize reconstructing the front stoop without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. I note that the building style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the historic district. I recommend denial, finding that the historic stoop was a significant architectural feature that was in place at the time of the designation of the historic district and its alteration and/or removal eliminated significant historic fabric, that a majority of houses in the row retain their historic rough face brownstone stoops with solid sidewalls. Therefore, the work has diminished the unity of the row, that the brick cladding and stone treads do not replicate or sufficiently recall the historic stoop steps in terms of profile, design, material details and finish, that low sidewalls on the stoop seen against the bowed facades created a strong rhythm on the streetscape, and their removal has diminished the significant historic design characteristic, and that the completed work detracts from the special architectural and historic character of the house, streetscape and historic district.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, Rich, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
Okay, with 10 in favor and 1 opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so please continue to work with the staff. Our staff will make themselves available to provide every assistance they can. All right, and we'll now move to the next item, which is a new application. So this is a public hearing item for similar work.
Right, that's item number six. LPC 19-15249, an application for a certificate of appropriateness for a Queens block 3532 lot 50, 60-53 68th Avenue in the Central Ridgewood Historic District, a Renaissance Revival style house built in 1909. The application is to legalize alterations to the front stoop and replacement of areaway fence without LPC permits. And this was read into the record during the hearing of December 15, 2020, but not presented at that time.
Just as I muted all of us, I have to now unmute us to open the hearing. So let me do that before we get started. All right, and Commissioner Holford Smith, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
I'm moved.
And Commissioner Gustafson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is open and we may begin.
Okay, 6053 68th Avenue is also on the north side of, of 68th Avenue between 60th Lane and Fresh Pond Road, like the same proposal we saw before. This proposal is to legalize re-cladding of the brownstone stoop treads and filling the pierced openings at the stoop cheek walls. They're also proposing to legalize the replacement of a historic iron areaway fence. So this is the fence. And as you can see, the stoop cheek walls have an opening at the side. So when it was re-clad, those were sealed in. And the stoops, the stoop was re-clad with, with brick and a new fence installed. So this, the applicant provided close up photographs of the existing stoop alterations, photographs of examples on the block, but most of those are also in violation. So these are other examples on the block, which were noted on the map we reviewed. The applicants are here if you, if you would like to make a statement or.
Okay, so would the applicants like to add anything? Where are they?
It's Martina and Joe Latta. They're there.
Not seeing.
Joe Latta needs to be promoted to panelist. She's an attendee list.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Martina. I'm also here with my mom. I'm just speaking on her behalf, make it clear. We, basically, the only thing that my parents, I mean, they didn't know it was in a landmark area, just like the person before. Honestly, their main concern was just the safety of the tenants. That's the reason they fixed the stair and the gate, just because it's used, obviously, on a daily basis. It was very, very bad. So a couple of tenants complained. So we just wanted to make a safety. We didn't know it was in any, you know, violation or anything like that. So we are sorry about that. On, you know, we just want to make it right.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioners. Any questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
There's a question. Commissioner Devonshire, can this kind of thing be parged over with a cement purge and it'll hold for more than five minutes?
More than five minutes, yes. But once you start salting it in the winter time, you're going to get problems with it.
And Katie, what's the story with the fence? Are these fences ubiquitous, not at all, half? What's the story on this?
Well, I did look at that and it's a common fence type. The fence, let me see. The fence here is pretty common fence type in Queens and Brooklyn. But this is only about 10 of them on this block remaining. So.
Remaining means that they used to be there and people take them out?
Yes, but, but not in violation because this district is relatively new. It's 2014, so.
And they put back other gates or are they just?
Like, what is there is very simplified ironwork, just very, like, picketed metal railings?
Most, most people have something.
Yes, they all have something in the front area, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, why don't we see if we have public testimony? If you're in the meeting and would like to speak, please raise your virtual hand so we can identify you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa to walk us through the testimony.
Okay, great, thank you. And we had two people sign up. And again, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. I'll start with Simeon Bankoff. Simeon, I brought you into the meeting.
Excellent. Hi, everyone, Simeon Bankoff, Executive Director of the Historic District Council. This is incredibly unfortunate situation where people are just trying to do the right thing. But unfortunately, it is not allowable. If bulldoze edge granite treads were proposed for any row house in any historic district in New York City, HGC would implore the LPC to deny the application. This material is inappropriate, especially when added to a brick and brownstone pallet. The removal of the original cast and wrought iron areaway fence is a great loss. And if at all humanly possible, should be repaired and reinstalled. Historic districts, as the Commissioners have mentioned, historic districts such as Ridgewood, which consists of specific planned building types and designs derive their special character from their unifying elements. And the lack of attention to detail here has compromised the aesthetic continuity. We look forward to the LPC working to correct this problem.
Okay, thank you. Um, and let's see, the next person signed up is Mark Bench. And I brought you into the meeting.
Mark Bench, for and on behalf of the VSA Metropolitan Chapter, good afternoon. A proposal to remove the original airway, areaway fence and to alter the stoop in this way would not meet the most basic of preservation standards and would surely not have received a permit in advance of the work. Therefore, this proposal to legalize work already undertaken without a permit should not be approved either. There appear to be no extenuating circumstances. The stoop needed cosmetic work, but appeared to be in a reasonable condition, as did the original fence, though the original gate was not present. We note that not only are the materials used to reface the stoop inappropriate, their use elsewhere in the district notwithstanding, but the quarter round, round openings in the stoop walls at each tread, a distinctive feature of these stoops have, have been filled in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
Thank you. And Rich, do we have any written testimony?
No other additional written comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to turn back to the applicant and see if they'd like to have any, an opportunity to respond to the comments or make any final comments before we move to our discussion. Are they still here?
Hello?
Hello, yes, please go ahead.
Um, yeah, I mean, we, the thing is, it's the same thing as, I mean, we watched the, the other presentation, like, we had the same issues. Like, we, you know, we wouldn't have did it the way it, you know, if we would have known that was not the way that it should have been done, we would, you know, we wouldn't have touched it at all. We, and also there, you know, on the same block, it's a whole bunch of homes. They're all done the same way. We didn't touch the railings or anything because it was the stairs that were, you know, falling apart. So that's the only thing that was fixed. My parents actually also had the same issue as the lady before us with the correspondence with the addresses. We, from this home, we moved to a different state. And my mom called multiple times for them to send her all the paperwork to the new address. It was never done. It happened with a whole bunch of mail as well. And we also had an issue with, because of the pandemic, we had tenants that weren't paying. So we were dealing with that as well. It just seems, I don't know, we do want to make it right. We didn't mean to, you know, and I understand that it's not for the, you know, it's not under the historic. But, you know, our thing is, we wouldn't have done that if we knew that it wasn't like, you know, that that wasn't approved. If we would have known, oh, hey, this is what is, then we would have fixed it in whatever way that you would have wanted us to. And, you know, it was, you know, they spent also a lot of money and everything to get it fixed and a lot of labor. And it was just, to be honest, it was just to be, you know, safe or the safety of the tenants in the, in the home.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. And again, you know, we're very sympathetic to this. This is, this is never a situation we like because, you know, property owners are trying to do the right thing. It's challenging to own particularly rental properties in this city, but any property with all of the rules and regulations. And, and, you know, when people try to do the right thing and maintain their property, it's, and spend money doing it, it's, it's hard for us to have to come in after the fact. And our first step is always to see whether or not we can approve it in the first instance. Would we have approved it if that came to us before the work had been done? And if that's not possible, are there modifications we can make to the work that would help with that? And then, you know, short of that, is it more of a kind of a redo? So we'll walk through some of those thoughts in our discussion here. And I see we have a couple of hands raised, so let me go to those. We may have questions before we begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin?
Yes, it sounds like the applicant did not, the current applicant did not remove the fence or it was removed before designation because they, the presenter, the young woman was just saying that they, they only changed the, you know, the stoop stairs or the, you know, stairs. So could somebody just clarify that as to whether they had any, any role in the fence? And if so, if so, at what point?
The fence was also replaced. That was stated, but.
I think the applicant was referring to the cheek wall and its railing on top of it staying in place while they.
Oh, okay, yes.
Thank, thank you.
Areaway fence is different than, yes, okay.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Yes, what year was this work done? And if I, and I don't, if we can go to the previous example as well, the previous case, what year was there, was the work done?
Well, Katie, can you give us an approximate based on the research that you did in the enforcement department?
I just mean in terms of the applicant themselves. When did they do this?
Okay.
We have to bring them back in or unmute them.
Do we not know? Okay, I thought maybe we knew. I'm just trying to understand whether it was, you know.
It was sometime before 2017 because it was involved in the previous presentation and it had already been altered, so must be 2016.
2016, because I, you know, I'm just trying to understand where it is relative to the 2014 designation.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And it was December 2014, so.
Yeah.
It was, it was before then, I'm sorry. It was a long time ago.
10 years or more.
Can you please say again what it is, when the work was done?
It was about 10 years ago.
Oh, well, that doesn't actually match with our records because we designated the district in December of 2014. And we take a photographic record at that time to, for the purposes of enforcement. And so our photograph shows that the other ironwork was in place in 2014.
She said she doesn't remember, but she, she thinks it was a very, very long time ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all right. Commissioners, are we ready to have our discussion? All right, let's, Commissioner Goldblum, do you want to start with this one again?
Okay, well, this one, this one is, I think, closer to being okay because of the retention of the cheek walls and the railings, which in my opinion creates much of a rhythm as you go down the street. I wish there were, maybe they could work with staff to find a way to cover over the brick, either with a tile or something that won't fall off in, in a, in a year or two. But I think that if the, if the brick pattern were concealed in some manner, I think it would be acceptable to leave it, even though we wouldn't approve it that way off the bat, I think it would be acceptable to leave it under these unusual circumstances.
Okay. And the railings?
I have a big concern with the, with the fence. I think it's unfortunate that we lost it, but I think that this one is similar enough to what's generally there, according to Katie. I would ask that next time, the staff make sure we have a little bit more info on, on context in terms of streetscapes. That would have helped me on this one.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Devonshire?
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, I, I don't know, I'm a little disturbed. Three years into the district being designated, says to me that it's enough time that people should know that they have to go to the LPC for things like this. Further to Michael's earlier question, depending upon the way the new steps were constructed, if there is concrete beneath the bricks, what they could do is take out the brick, take out the treads and replace them with full face cast. the brick, take out the treads, and replace them with full-face cast cement, cast stone, Dutchman. And that way avoid, you know, then all you've got is a, a very thin joint at the tread riser, uh, connection that would, would eliminate the, the real issue of salt fretting and, and accused with efflorescence and expansion. So that would be, they could work with staff to do that. There, there are plenty of companies in New York City that do cast stone work like that.
Okay. And the railing, the fence at the area way?
Reluctantly okay with the railing. I mean, that, it's such a common thing that these things get replaced. Um, I'm okay with it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I tend to agree with the two Michaels, uh, that this case is slightly different. At least the cheek wall is there, and, uh, if they could work with staff on some of the recommendations, uh, to get it closer to the original, that would be helpful.
Okay, great. Commissioner Bland?
Whoops. Totally muted. There I am. Sorry. Um, I can agree as well. In this case, but Sarah, what I want to say is, I was very proud of your articulate and empathetic response at the moment. You know, speaking extemporaneously as you had to then, and I think you did the commission proud by, by how you responded to that applicant in a really unfortunate situation. I think all of us were very sympathetic with, with her. But what this means to, for me, is that the, um, somehow the commission, I don't, I don't buy into the idea that we blame the, the people who live there. I think somehow the commission, through its outreach, through new outreach, through whatever it is, has to figure out how, uh, these people understand that they are in a landmarks, uh, district and, and their rules. So I just leave it with that, but my compliments as well.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Letty? Oh, you're muted. All right, you're unmuted now.
Yeah, um, I, I guess I'm in agreement. I, I do feel that something has to be done to the stairs to bring them either back to where they should be or as close as possible, um, working with staff and looking at different materials to do that. And, you know, I guess I, I could go along with the fence. And, but I do agree with Fred's statement also that, that we, and, and we, and you, it's been discussed that, that, that the more education we can do, the better.
Yeah, yeah. We did start to see this pattern of violations and realize there was a disconnect between the, this sort of smaller group of advocates in the neighborhood and, and the majority of the other property owners. And so we've been working hard to try to address that, and we'll continue to do that. And, and as Commissioner Goldblum suggested, try to get this group of people with the stoop violations together. Okay, and Commissioner Jefferson?
I'm extremely sympathetic, and if there's any technical means of, of repairing this in a simple manner, riser thread relationship, I would go for that. But I, I do think at some point, we have to come to, the community has to know the rules of the community, where they live. You know, we live in a society that has laws, regulations.
Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Gustafson?
Well, I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Devonshire's approach to the, um, the stairs. I, but, you know, in the end, you know, they, the fence is a problem. Um, you know, it's, it's, um, original material removed and now replaced with something that is, um, not anywhere close. Um, and if there was damage to it, and the, the time we'd, if we, and we'd seen it, we would have done something different. Um, and I don't see that this would have been what we would have done. So, um, so I, I can't approve the fence. But I do, I, you know, I would, one would think that our rulings here today are going to be part of the communication process with this neighborhood. People are going to hear what happened here today, and that's going to inspire them to act one way or another. So keep that in mind.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, and, um, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Thanks. Um, as I said earlier, I think that the presence of cheek walls here is, is kind of the most important or, um, important feature, and since they remain, I think that that's a good thing. Um, I, I think that, like others, if, if there can be a solve that doesn't mean removing entirely the, you know, the stair itself, um, can be done, and we can recommend that they work with staff to do that, I, I would agree to that, but I would not, um, certainly couldn't redo the whole, the whole thing. And I can approve the railing, um, the fence. I mean, I'm just...
Okay.
The issue around the, the missing, though, I mean, I, I wonder what you think about this. And the, the, again, in the previous case, and I'm just talking, I'm not talking about the case itself, but made a point that she went to the Department of Buildings and wanted, and, and someone at the desk there said to her, this doesn't need to be fixed. Do you think that it's about the agencies also becoming more, um, sort of, you know, linked in the, I don't know that you, wire that, but it would be nice, had that person at the Department of Building said, but you know, this is a landmarks district?
Right. Yeah, well, and to that point, in the Department of Buildings database, there is a field for landmark status. And so if it's a property that's calendered, it gets a C. If it's a designated property, it gets an L. So if you are filing with the Department of Buildings, the examiner should see that L and say that you cannot get your DOB permit until you provide an LPC permit. So that is what typically is what happens. So, you know, what happened in that particular case and why that didn't happen, I don't know, but that's the typical process. The Department of Buildings requires the LPC permit as part of their materials checklist or their objection sheet. But also, it's, it's important to note that there is a lot of work that can happen without a DOB permit that we still regulate. So just brownstone repair, brick repointing, resurfacing, all of, a lot of the types of restoration work that we review do not require a DOB permit. So it's really important that we reach out to property owners to make sure that, and contractors, which we've also done, done contractor seminars, that, that make sure that they understand their responsibilities because, um, they're not always going to be going to the Department of Buildings. So Department of Buildings is a good check, but it's not the only check.
Yeah. I mean, has there ever been the consideration of kind of a permitting process within the landmarks work, regulatory, in other words, that someone needs to get a permit through landmarks in order to, to do those, that kind of work?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand the question.
You know, I'm, I'm, basically, people have to know not to be, not to do certain kind of work, and we have to do all of this outreach. But rather than outreach, has there ever been discussion of requiring permits through LPC?
Do you mean DOB permits?
No, LPC permits.
Do we already require that?
No, I mean...
That's what we do.
But there is, but they don't, if they don't know, what, I mean, what will trigger them to, to know to come, to, to request it? If they, I mean, I just, the outreach thing is a little bit, it's a little, it's a, it's a lot to ask for, I think. Anyway.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think this is, you know, it, having a property in New York City, there are many responsibilities and many regulatory layers. And I, ultimately, as a property owner, you sort of have to grapple with figuring out what all those layers are. And, um, you know, this is, again, a situation where I'm not sure the advocacy really represented the entire community. And so we have been working hard to try to make sure that everybody understands, um, what they're, where they are right now. And, you know, that can happen through our outreach, through mailings as well. And in addition, there are historic district brown signs, which is also another, the street signs are brown, which is also another indicator. So, you know, I think that, um, reaching the property owners is really, you know, the only thing we can do. We've also partnered with the local council member and, um, the community boards to spread awareness as well.
Yeah, right. And I, again, I wasn't referring to the main permitting that we do by doing work right now, but I'm wondering if there was another bit that would allow people to, to, to know the thing needed to get some kind of, um, go ahead to even...
Yeah.
Even submit anything.
Well, right. And educating the contractors, if we can get a handle on who the contractors were, where there's a handful that did all of this work, that would also be another avenue to make sure that the contractors aren't advising their, their clients inappropriately.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so let's continue around. We have two more, and then Commissioner Devonshire, I'll come back to you, okay?
That's okay. Nevermind, Sarah, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Um, well, I agree with a lot of the comments that have already been stated. Um, I think the cheek walls are pretty much the defining character. And if, um, they can work with staff and trying to remove the granite treads and reface the brick to make it look more like a brownstone stoop, that would be great. Um, I also would like them to work with staff and understand about the, the cutouts that were originally in these cheek walls. And to see if, you know, if they were a, a feature that actually allowed water to escape and that would help alleviate future damage, um, they should reinstate those. Um, I think the, the fence is a, is a real loss. Um, there was, you know, original fabric that was just, um, eliminated, and I'm not sure what to say about that. I don't think what's there now is appropriate, but, um, I don't think we can, you know, get back the lost fabric, so...
Well, Commissioner, you, if you think it's inappropriate, then you should, you know, take that view on, on that aspect of an even motion.
Yeah. I guess I would, I would call that this, the railing then inappropriate.
Okay. And Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Holford Smith's, uh, statements about the stoop. And of course, I also regret the loss of the historic fabric. At the same time, I agree with some of the other commissioners that often, you know, fences often do, uh, you know, get lost. It's unfortunate. In this case, it didn't have to be perhaps, but I think that the, uh, replacement is simple enough to be judged appropriate to this district. I think in the other case we talked about, uh, part of the issue might have been the address. The woman suggested that because of her dress changes or something, there was some confusion at the buildings where they didn't recognize the district. I'm not sure. But, um, one question I had about, uh, in general, because the earlier applicant said, well, it was okay because I didn't have, I didn't even need a permit, that the Buildings Department told her. Would stoop replacement normally require some kind of permit for getting other...
Right. So as, as I understand it, the resurfacing of the stoop would not require a DOB permit, but if you're dismantling and reconstructing it, and there are structural measures that need to be addressed, that would require a DOB permit?
Yeah, I would, I would think so. So that's what I was, I was going to say. I hope, I hope that all the examples, DOB know that if you take, you need a permit.
So, yeah.
And most of them, quite a, a great many of the stoops that exist will be in landmark districts without it. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think, um, I, we have a, a couple of people who, um, would oppose the fence, but I think the majority of the commissioners would support the fence. And I think everybody is, um, comfortable as a, a first try to have the applicant work with the staff to, um, address the stoop, uh, in a way that, um, would have, would allow for modifications rather than full replacement, and that would be, uh, restudying the materiality of the risers and treads and the cutouts in the cheek walls to allow for proper waterproofing in addition to the, a more aesthetically appropriate appearance. So I'll, I'll go ahead and make that motion, and let me, um, to the, hang on, I'll go ahead and make it. Okay, I just, hang on, lost my original. Okay, let me open these back up again. All right, in the matter of docket number... Loading. In the matter of docket number... 19-15249 60-53 68th Avenue in the central Ridgewood Historic District, a Renaissance revival style house built in 1909. This is an application to legalize alterations to the front stoop and replacement of the area way fence without Landmarks Preservation Commission permits. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the neighborhood. I recommend approval with modifications, finding, hang on, let me just, where I've got, um, finding that, uh, the new, um, ironwork is compatible with the variety of ironwork found at area ways in the historic district, and that the stoop, the work at the stoop retains the historic cheek walls and sides, maintaining the overall presence of this significant feature found throughout this historic district. However, I find that the brick cladding and granite treads do not replicate or sufficiently recall the historic stoop steps in terms of profile, material, and finish, and that the completed work, um, detracts from the special architectural and historic character of the building and the streetscape and the historic district. And therefore, I recommend that the applicant work in close consultation with the staff to remove the brick and stone treads and risers and resurface the steps with, uh, an appropriate, uh, material, brownstone tinted stucco or cast stone cladding, and, um, explore the, um, cutouts at the base of the cheek walls and the, um, other steps needed to properly waterproof the steps. Okay, so with that, um, Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. And Rich, will you call the vote?
Sheriff Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Nay.
Commissioner Letty? And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Nay.
Okay, with eight in favor and three opposed, the motion carries.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications. And, and again, we are sympathetic and can work with you on a timeframe, but please do work in close consultation with the staff so that we can assure that, um, you know, the appropriate next steps are taken in, in a timely manner. All right, thank you. All right, so that is the conclusion of our morning session. We are a little behind schedule, um, but I think we need, everybody needs to take a break, and we'll come back in 30 minutes and, um, begin the rest of our public hearing agenda for the afternoon. So commissioners, just, you can turn off your audio and your video, and...